Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the work session of the Independent School District 279 School Board. It is June 16th, 2020, and it is currently 6:03 PM. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 13D.021, in the current state of emergency due to the COVID-19 pandemic, this work session of the Independent School District 279 School Board will be conducted via electronic means. Topics this evening: Building a Better Future, information update on that program, the 2019-2020 Strategic Priority Results, the strategic planning process, a three-year board calendar broken down into 90-day, one-year, and three-year calendars. And the outcomes of this evening will be the board members will receive information and updates on Building Better Future, the strategic priority results, and the strategic planning process. With that, let me turn it over to Superintendent McIntyre.
All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome. Yes, we have a full agenda tonight, and a lot of work to get through this evening. So I just wanted to kind of check in with who's on the call. This is one of our bigger calls of recent meetings. We have lots of district staffs joining us and some other guests. But to start, I'd like, as we always do, ask the board members just to check in and introduce themselves. So we start with Chair Ostaffi. You have already done that, so maybe Vice Chair Simon next.
Hi, Tanya Simon, School Board Member.
Kelsey, you're in the middle of my screen. You can go next, maybe.
Okay, Kelsey Dawson-Malton, School Board Member.
I don't see Jackie. She's somewhere in this grid. I think so.
School Board Director Jackie Muscata-Jones.
Thank you, and Heather Douglas.
Yes, Heather Douglas, School Board Director here.
And I understand that Director Craig won't be able to join us this evening.
I was wondering, does anybody know if you can see more than 15 people on your screen at a time?
Anthony, are you our expert in this?
I believe if you're in, if you click the three dots in the lower right corner and you go to change the layout, and then if you're in the tiled view, they might, as I'm looking at it, it looks like it might limit it to 15. Might have 15 max.
All right, thank you.
All right, and so in addition on the call, kind of to everyone's point, we have a lot of people on the call. We have our cabinet members here tonight, and then a number of our district leaders helping us with our strategic priority results, who you'll get to hear from later, as well some guests joining us tonight regarding our Building a Better Future agenda item. So with that, I am going to move us right into our first agenda item, and we're going to give you some updates on our Building a Better Future work. At our board meeting on May 26th, I provided you with my superintendent recommendations that came from our Building a Better Future process, including the various committees that were involved and the Oversight Task Force, was the backdrop of my presentation and my recommendations in May. In May, I recommended that you delay your vote until the June 23rd board meeting, and that was for a few reasons. First of all, it really gave the board time to hear about our proposed 21 budget and the budget outlook for the years, you know, the years to come here. And you heard that work, updates on the budget last week, June 9. It also, by waiting till June 23rd, it gave you a chance to hear from Valerie Dawson regarding the legislative session and what's currently happening with the legislature as they go into special session. And lastly, just really giving you time for really anything else that might help you as a board in your decision-making, and to also give you a chance to answer any questions you may have. And so some of you did have some follow-up questions, looking for some additional information specifically regarding the budget as it related to the recommended addition at Rice Lake, including things like some clarification on the price tag of the project, any programming implications regarding the addition, especially the added gym space. So we do have Principal Clavon with us tonight to help answer some of those questions. So tonight, we're going to give the board some of that additional information regarding that addition at Rice Lake, and I'm just going to have Ron Meyer, our Executive Director of Finance and Operations, lead the conversation and introduce our guests that are joining us tonight. So, thank you, Ron.
All right, thank you, Corey. Good evening, Chair Ostaffi, board members, cabinet members. As Corey just mentioned, the purpose of our time tonight is to update the board on some of the work that we have been engaged in around that Rice Lake addition, and also to answer any questions that may be lingering for you to be able to make the best decision possible at the June 23rd meeting. So tonight specifically, we want to address some of the questions that have come up regarding the cost, and also, we're going to take a look at the financing of the project. We talked a lot about lease levy and being able to use that funding source for this Rice Lake addition, and so we're going to dive into that a little bit and open it up for any questions that board members may have. As we noted at the board, the May board meeting, the price tag has changed over the course of the last, really, year that we've been diving into this as we first looked at it with our ECMAC group, and then as it shifted to the Oversight Task Force. And even as we come to you this evening, there has been some changes and some shifts, which is typical as you go through a planning-construction process. And so we're going to dive into kind of the evolution of that and the cost breakdown. With us this evening is Linay Shoen from World Architects and Engineers. You will recognize her. She has been very involved over the last several years with our ECMAC work, and she's with us this evening to walk us through the process of that construction development, and then to talk about what factors could and do impact our project costs. Including in that, that she will discuss and dive into is some recent changes to the construction code that affects all school districts in the state of Minnesota. And we've really been working hard, especially over the last couple of weeks, to really understand how it applies to us and make sure that we're accurately reflecting it in the budget that we are bringing forth and talking about and asking for approval of. Along with that, and Corey mentioned, there are also some programmatic implications to this request and to this addition. In particular, that addition to the gym space, and that really became clear in our Oversight Task Force work this spring, which is, again, part of their recommendation is to include that. So this evening, Margot Clavon is going to speak to specifically what our current reality is for programming at Rice Lake in using our gym space as well as our cafeteria, and what it may look like without that additional gym space as we are projected to continue to add some students at Rice Lake over the course of the next five years. Finally, we also have Jody Zespa from Ellers Public Finance Advisors, and she is going to walk us through that financing plan for the project using our lease levy funding. So with that, I'm going to introduce Linay and ask her to come off of mute. I'm going to present up a short PowerPoint presentation that she will walk us through. Linay?
Thank you, Ron. Good evening, Chair Ostaffi, Board Member Superintendent McIntyre. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. Thinking back on the process of ECMAC, it's been a pleasure to work with the district for now almost four years on the evolution of investigating your enrollment and capacity needs within the district. Just wanted to share, first of all, that we've been working in partnership with ICS Construction throughout this whole process in a team environment in regards to looking at scope, project ideas, and most certainly estimating and budgeting. Tonight, I'm just going to touch on the process and timeline from ECMAC to Oversight Task Force to where we are today. Just give you a little bit of a reminder and introduction again of where we're at with capacity needs at Rice Lake, and then talk about a couple of the potential building additions at that site. And then, as Ron had mentioned, yes, there are some new storm shelter requirements for all educational facilities in the state of Minnesota. So a little bit on process and timeline, there's really three milestones that I wanted to point out for the overall process. In January of 2020, as Ron had mentioned, the Enrollment and Capacity Management Advisory Committee, ECMAC, made that recommendation to add a classroom addition to the Rice Lake Elementary School. And at that point, ICS and World had put together a draft diagram and cost estimate that was provided to administration. And then throughout that process, or right following that process, in January and March, the Oversight Task Force met, again, reviewed that ECMAC recommendation for that building addition. And at that point, there was some additional information that was brought to the process, and that was some information on gym capacity and how it's stressed now, and it creates additional stress at the cafeteria for PE classes and date classes. And the stress will only increase as enrollment grows at the site. So at that point, we updated the draft diagram and provided a cost estimate to administration to reflect those thoughts on the project. Then in March 2020, so this is all happening pretty much at the same time, the Minnesota State Building Code adopts the 2018 version of the IBC, which is the International Building Code. And basically, this code change requires storm shelters for all educational facilities. The state continues to interpret code because it is brand-new, and the most recent interpretation is dated June 5th, and we currently have other interpretations that are under review right now as well. So if we start with the ECMAC process, and we're looking at the Rice Lake capacity, the building was overcapacity in this last school year, which is 2018-20. And the 24-25 enrollment projection is set to be, or projected to be, 759 students. The building addition at that time was to propose to increase the capacity at that site from 619, which is the current capacity, to 790 students to accommodate the 759 that will be there eventually. This addition or this proposal included six classrooms and some support spaces, meaning toilets, mechanical, electrical. And the January 2020 preliminary budget estimate at that point was 5.5 to 6.5 million. I just wanted to point out that at that timeline, when we were working with ECMAC, it was the Elementary Study Committee was just in its infancy. So the range of that 5.5 to 6.5 million was allowing for some of that continued discussion and development to happen in regards to the details of what might be included in that addition. So then, as we move on to the Oversight Task Force process, again, that sixth classroom addition was included in that discussion, and at that point, that gym capacity need became apparent. The addition to achieve a one-station gymnasium and some support spaces is approximately 7,500 square feet. And then at that point in March, the preliminary budget estimate was set at 8.8 to 9 million. And I do want to point out to this group that at that point, there was discussions in regards to furniture fixtures and equipment, and the understanding that a lot of that is already there on that site because you're already serving an additional 100 students above your capacity at that site. And so the majority of your FFNE budget is not needed because you already have that investment made at that site. So the 650 was subtracted from the 8.8 to 9, and I believe the board and administration had a number of 8.2 at that point. And again, a scope and budget worksheet was provided to administration for consideration throughout those changes. This is a diagram, which we call our capacity diagram for Rice Lake Elementary. At this point, you can see that the capacity is called out right in the middle of the diagram in a box at 790 students. That includes the gym addition. So in order to get to that capacity, you need to have that classroom addition, and then this does also show the addition of that gym to help relieve that stress and pressure at the existing gym and cafeteria on the site. So today, with the code requirements for the storm shelter, the concept includes a sixth classroom and support addition, still at that 10,500, a one-station gym and support space, and then the storm shelter requirement is in the budget packet that we had provided. It's a, is a range right now of between $600,000 and $800,000 additional to that budget. So it gets us right back to where we were. When we recouped it for FFNE, we need to add it back to the budget to cover the storm shelter requirement at the site. And I'll let you know a little bit more what that entails here. So there's a lot of information, and I believe there was a lot more detail in regards to the storm shelter code that was provided. But here are some general ideas and understandings of what does this mean. For the storm shelter, it includes additional structure at roofs, exterior walls, and foundation. The storm shelter does need to be structurally separate from a non-shelter area by a two-hour fire separation. So that is a more robust construction for an exterior wall or separation. Critical life safety systems need to be included in the shelter to protect and ensure that continual operation for the shelter. The exterior components must be designed for impact windborne debris, and that really becomes apparent when you start talking about windows and openings to that shelter. Windows and doors must be rated and labeled for that windborne debris impact. Opening, openings need to be protected, and they're allowed but are permanently affixed and operable from the inside. And I'll show you some photos of what that might look like. Toilets do need to be included in that shelter. If you're going to put the entire population of that school, of that elementary school in one spot, you need to make sure that you've got those support spaces. And then mechanical and electrical systems need to be independent, and they include upgrades for atmospheric change, et cetera. And this is just a quick photo that shows what, if you were to choose the classroom addition as a storm shelter, what some of the implications may be here. And this is showing there are limited openings for windows. And you can see on the left of the diagram, the windows are open, but they have to have those operational shutters on the inside of the building. The photo on the right shows those shutters shut. And I think it's important to bring up here, too, that in visiting with Margot and others and your elementary study team, that one of the criteria is to provide as much natural light to students as possible. And Rice Lake, with already having those in-board classrooms, struggles to bring that natural light all the way through the building. So something to think about on our approach for where we want that storm shelter to occur. This is another example, a photo of a school where it just shows a little bit more detail in regards to what those, how those windows in a classroom shelter might look like with those shutters as well. And then, one approach to do a storm shelter and a classroom addition might be no windows at all. So I just wanted to show you what that photo might look like without any natural light in there. Lots of wall space, but no windows. So a few takeaways for all of you in regards to what do storm shelters mean and what do we need to think about here? The state of Minnesota adopted the new building code in March of 2020. There were discussions up until that point, but they were very vague, and there's not clarification until the building code becomes law. This is not atypical, and this usually occurs every two to three years. This is just kind of a big one for the state of Minnesota. The recent code adoption incorporated significant storm shelter requirements for all educational facilities, and a comprehensive understanding of all the revisions and their associated implications takes time. The state of Minnesota, state of Minnesota interpretations and clarifications can continue to be issued. We're talking to them every week. The most recent major interpretation was June 5th, and we do currently have several projects under mechanical review right now. Those code changes affect all school districts in the state and all projects in planning and design. And the opportunity here now is to set the budget accordingly to include costs for the storm shelter requirements, depending on which option you choose. There are many districts right now that have already had community support and approval of funding resources that did not include the storm shelter funding within the budget. And unfortunately, they're working on carving that out of their voter-approved budgets at this time. So affects everybody here in the state.
So that is, that really looks at the architectural pieces to the addition proposal, including the gym, and some of the justification for having that gymnasium as the storm shelter to really be able to give us the flexibility and the creativity to integrate those next-generation learning space recommendations that came from that elementary task force, study group. There's also some programmatic implications. So I do want to invite Margot to talk through, again, the current reality of what she is problem-solving through as we speak, and what could take place or would have to take place without additional gym space if we were to get that 40 to 50 more kids that's projected at Rice Lake. Margot, are you there?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Ron. And thank you, everybody. Good evening. As you know, at Rice Lake, we are overcapacity, and you're very versed in what that means for our classrooms and our cafeteria, parking lot, et cetera. My focus tonight, I've been asked to share, is what is that impact with the single gymnasium that Rice Lake has? So we have what's called a mid-size gym, as you're aware, and we have a singleton. So I want to start by just talking about our staffing allocations. And at our current capacity, we are staffed with 2.1 teachers that will do the PE and the date services. So two full-time teachers and a third that's just there for about an hour a day. So as they're charged with the task of providing all the PE and date for our building, you can see that a singleton gym is not, is not going to suffice. So all, half of our services need to be pushed out somewhere into our site. And what that looks like at Rice Lake is we are having to use our cafeteria for gym space as well as a music room that is vacant for the last two hours of the day. So what exactly does that look like? I just want to paint a quick picture of what it looks like currently, knowing that we're projected to have even more kids at our building. So how it works is, in the morning, starting right away at 9 o'clock, our cafeteria is used for gymnasium space. And so we have six sections of kindergarten and one section of first grade, and they use the cafeteria in the morning for their gym time. And that space, I'm guessing, is maybe about 65% of what a gym would be. So that's why we put our smallest learners in there, which is kindergarten and first grade. So once they wrap up their gym time, then our custodial crew comes in and converts it to cafeteria space. So that means they bring in 24 tables, seating 16 students. They set up the compost station, wiping down the table stations, et cetera, and then we're ready to begin the dining experience for our kids. We've compact that into as tight a window as possible because we know in the afternoon, we need to turn right back around and use that cafeteria for gymnasium space. So other than the first 15-minute block of lunch and the last 15-minute block of lunch, we have maximized the cafeteria with our students. So we have two full-grade levels eating in the cafeteria together at all times. And that's about nine to 10 sections of kids. So it's very crowded. It's loud. I, I call it visual noise. It's just every seat is occupied. So it's just got an energy into it. I wouldn't call it necessarily a relaxing dining experience, but that's, that's how we roll. And when the last group comes out, then the custodial crew comes in and they flip it back to gym space. So that means they take all the tables out, they take all the compost stations out, et cetera. But then they do have to bring in the zimboni to clean it, as you can imagine. 700-plus kids eating in a two-hour slot, they need to give it a good overhaul. And then, once the floor is dried, it slides right back into being used as a gym space, and that is for date and skills. So the cafeteria is used at the front end and at the back end of the day. So you might be wondering then, what does our gym do? Because of our size and because of the number of sections, our gym is gridlocked with kids from 9:05 in the morning until 3:05 in the afternoon. Every 30 minutes, there is a new classroom of kids coming in. There's no leeway. It is solid from 9:05 to 3:05. So because of that, that means we cannot use that gymnasium for flex space at all. So anytime we need a presentation coming in or something that kids need to do, we just have to cancel gym for that, that window. So, and again, that's where we are currently with about 720 kids, and we know more is coming. And so that's just going to be more sections that will have to have their gym time in the cafeteria. Not quite exactly sure what lunch then window would look like. So needless to say, if we could get a second gym, what would that mean for our building? It means that our cafeteria could be used as a flex space in the morning and in the afternoon. And that would just be a plethora of options for staff. It would also mean that our lunch window could be extended a little bit. Not that we have any more square footage to put the students, but if we could open up that window of time because we're not sandwiched by having to use it as a gymnasium, we wouldn't have to have the kids piled in there on top of each other quite to the point that we do know. And again, we could use the space in the morning and afternoon for a flex space. And of course, having two gymnasiums would mean that our entire K-5 population, our date program, and our skills program could actually have a FIAD block in an actual gymnasium. And I haven't mapped out a schedule yet if we had two full-functioning gyms, but I would imagine we might have a little window in the day that we could also use one of the gyms at least for some flex spacing. Because we would not have to be gridlocked. Two gyms would not be gridlocked. So that's kind of where we're at. That's the positive impact if you so determine that a second gym can be part of the plan, which would be just a beautiful reality for our learners as well as staff. So again, I appreciate your time in processing this consideration.
Okay. Thank you, Margot. So to summarize, we, we've just heard some of the programmatic rationale for why we included the gymnasium as part of the $9 million recommendation that Corey brought to the board in May. And we talked a little bit now, Linay gave us a snapshot on what the implications of this new code is, and really kind of reinforcing that rationale for that additional gym space so that we can use that gym to do that reinforcement for the storm shelter, and we can leave the flexibility in that classroom space to really be able to integrate and implement some of those recommendations from the Elementary Next Generation Learning Space team. So before we get to the financing piece and kind of get into the numbers and how we would pay for that and what's the impact to taxpayers, I'll pause here for any questions that board members may have as it relates to kind of the architectural piece and the overall price tag of the project as well as potentially any programmatic questions that you might have for, for Margot.
Thanks, Ron. I just wanted to, you know, make sure that we can go through this and everybody can ask a question and then move on. Let me start and go with Tanya, Kelsey, Heather, and then Jackie, because Jackie always likes to think a lot before she asks her questions. So, let's do that, and let's start with Tanya. Thank you.
Can you just refresh my memory? I don't have the numbers in front of me. How long have we been at this degree of severity of overcapacity?
That's a great question. I don't have the numbers in front of me. I can get that for you, Tanya. It's been several years, though. My recollection is since ECMAC started, which was four years ago now, that it had been on the radar in terms of the five-year projection to be overcapacity.
Okay. And then I remember from our ECMAC conversations and the parking, there were some questions about parking lot and parking traffic. This doesn't include solutions for that, correct? All right, so...
Yeah, Linay, I'll ask you, because I know we've had a lot of conversations about that, and we do have some budget built into this to be able to address some, but I'll have Linay speak specifically to what that looks like. But I'll I'll have Linay speak specifically to what that looks like.
We do. We actually have, I don't have a site plan with me, but we do have it master planned for an additional, I think, seventy-six parking stalls. And as we did a site walkthrough as a part of the investigative process, we met with the city. And um, they were also very excited to see some additional parking there with that beautiful lit field and then the baseball fields as well. So um, there is a plan for parking and any other site work that needs to be done as a part of this addition.
All right, that's all my questions. Thanks.
Kelsey?
Um, I am going to hold my questions for right now until the next part of the presentation.
Thank you. Uh, Heather?
Uh, yeah, I was actually going to suggest that maybe we hear the um, the next piece and then we could better um, ask our questions because I think most of my questions will be on the next portion.
The financing piece?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Jackie?
I have some questions for Margot. Margot, thank you for letting us know what it's really like in your building. Having teaching in a building very similarly right now and we're getting our updates, so. My question is, does pre-K get to use the gym at all then during your day right now?
Yes, pre-K has a twenty-minute window.
Okay. And then um, what uh, special ed program is at your site right now?
We have the DCD skills program as well as full service.
And they have their own gym time with DAP or are they integrated?
They do both, both models.
I'm just, I I'm just, I can't imagine, because we have DCD in our building, I'm just having a hard time imagining how stressful it is for um, kids in that program to be in that lunch or the gym right now with all those um, kids in there. So I just wanted to um, highlight that. Uh, I think. I think that's, do you have, um, just because I know um, the board hasn't always heard all the stuff that's going on because of your capacity issues, maybe ECMAC has, but not everybody else. Is there anything else you want to let us know? Like, are are teachers teaching in hallways now or, I mean, what's it really like? Because in my school, all EL is in the hallways and we don't have a library anymore. And so I just want to hear that.
Yep. We definitely have teaching in our hallways. We have all our interventions, which is like our our double dose for students. Unfortunately, we do not have classroom space for that. So all um, our hallway appendages just have tables that sit out outside of classrooms. And so um, our most vulnerable learners are receiving their second dose of academics in a hallway system for sure. Our talented and gifted program has etched out about one-fourth of our media center. So that uh, joins with the media. Our entire uh, special ed program operates out of one single classroom. Our entire EL program, which also has two full-time staff, three ESPs operates out of a single classroom as well. You know, we have our mental health services are in closets that we have converted into offices. So we painted, carpeted, um, phone lines, et cetera. You know, the kids keep coming, so we just keep trying to figure out exactly, exactly what it what it can be to provide services for our kids. But we're we're at the max. We are absolutely, I'm in my fourth year at Rice Lake and every year, you know, it adds a new layer. Next year, we will not have a four-star at our building because we just cannot provide the space for it. So that's been our first program that we've actually had to turn away because every square inch of that building is in play, every inch and hallway.
Hey, Margot, is it correct we removed the computer labs out of there as well to turn them into classroom spaces?
That is correct.
Thank you. I just wanted the public to be able to hear, you know, what we're really talking about.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Um, I have a question that and I've expressed some interest in building on elsewhere in order to increase capacity even more in the district for more academic programs and alleviating the overcrowding at Rice Lake that way through some boundary changes. And even if you do that, let's separate this decision. It sounds like the issue around the gym uh, is a separate item. Even if, you know, a hundred kids were removed elsewhere or the capacity was, the the actual use, which it was at capacity with your new programs and different programs in there and trying to keep different groups of kids separated for safety and and other reasons. Would a, you know, even without the building capacity issue, would you still need the new gym?
Well, right now, we're at about seven hundred and twenty students. So you know, what our schedule looks like operating with one gym is is what I shared with you. So could we maintain that at this moment? Yes, we could maintain it, but I don't think it's a very effective model at the moment. If we drop down to the true six hundred and twenty kids, would we still need a second gym? I would have to look at a schedule. You know, how many sections would that be?
Okay.
I haven't done that.
Thank you. And I'm not saying don't build it. I'm saying I just want to know if this is two separate items that that we can look at. And also, you mentioned seventy-six parking spaces. Does that mean you're going to come south into the parkland of the, I don't know if that's parkland by the city or if that's ours. But behind the building is that is, where would that parking go? Because I I don't see a lot of room.
Yeah. Linay?
Sure, I can take that one. Um, the parking would be an extension of the parking lot that is on the, is at the east side of the building.
East side, okay.
Where you have the bus loop. Um, we would extend it to the south. There's enough space there to perhaps just pull back a little bit of earth but not impede on the football field or the soccer field that's there. So at this point, we just kind of extend along that whole side of the site.
Okay. And uh, from the drawings that I originally saw in ECMAC, you were building on to the west side of the building. Now you're building to the south side and you'll be eliminating uh, what is currently a brand-new expensive gym, outdoor playset as well as uh, some other hard-surface basketball courts and some other things, uh, as well as taking out some additional parking for the gym. So tell me how you're going to mitigate that.
Um, so we did talk a bit about relocating that playground. You're correct there. Um, the equipment can be relocated. I do not have a cost off the top of my head, but I'm happy to get that for you. In looking at the site holistically and your your neighbor or the the sharing of the baseball fields, if you will, there were some discussions with the city in regards to how can we use that site holistically? Could some of your ponding and or playgrounds move closer to those baseball fields? And so that's an option there. Uh, I think your second question was, are we taking away parking for the ball fields? I think the conversation with the city at the time was when we had showed them the additional seventy-six that will be there. There's a very minimal amount of stalls that might be close to the fields that would be taken away. So they looked at it as a benefit for, from a parking standpoint. So you're correct. There would be a cost associated with relocating that playground.
And we did, part of our, part of our meeting uh, that we did have with the city that Margot alluded to, we did go out and look at it and show um, the Parks and Rec Director who oversees the uh, those playfields there. Um, and we walked him through relocating that playground space, the ponding uh, that would have to take place, the additional parking. Obviously, his concern was um, trying to maintain the integrity of the playfield itself, the that soccer um, football field as well as the baseball field, which which we believe we can do with the site plan. There is some lights um, on that football uh, field as well. So there's some more kind of motivation to not impede onto that uh, space. And and we do feel like with this plan that we're able to achieve that. So um, he was supportive of us moving forward. The one caveat, the one thing that um, he did draw attention to that we will take a look at as we um, as we continue with that plan and look at the ponding is the drainage because we do have some drainage challenges in those fields um, right now. And so we'll look to try to to improve some of those as we go through the the site plan project.
Okay. And and was this cost of moving, since we're going to have to do it, is the cost of moving or at least tearing down the playground, is that built into the cost that you've given us so far?
Yes, we have a a budget line item for um, for um, site work and that is included. And obviously, we'd work very close with Dale and or any other service providers or consultants that you utilize for for your playground equipment.
Okay, thank you. Ron?
Okay, let's um, I'll invite Jody Vespas then to the table. And she'll walk us through, just to um, preface it. We've been talking about, and Corey, his initial recommendation was nine million dollars. That's what we've built this financing plan on. Obviously, in your board packet, you had two different options that we budgeted out for you. One with the gym, that's right around that nine million dollar mark, and one without the gym, that's in the six and a half million dollar range. So the financing plan that we're showing you this evening is with the assumption that we would add on the gym as that was the original recommendation from Superintendent McIntyre. So I will share my screen and then ask Jody um, to walk us through this document.
Okay, thank you, Ron. So we have two schedules here. The first is our sources and uses schedule. And you'll see that it's titled Certificates of Participation. That is the financing tool that we use for lease purchase transactions. And um, the most recent certificate of participation that was issued by Osseo Schools was back in September of two thousand fourteen. And that financed your additions at Osseo High School, Park Center High School, and Maple Grove High School. So when you issue the certificates of participation, then the payments are generally financed through the annual lease levy. The sources and uses schedule that you see in front of you right now was set up so that we would net that deposit to the construction fund at right around nine million dollars. So you'll see it's at eight million nine hundred and eighty-five thousand right now based upon the estimates that we have included here. We're also assuming that you would earn a little bit of interest because you'll issue the bond, you'll issue the certificates, and then you'll have that deposit right away and you will earn some interest on it while the project is underway as you're paying off the bills related to it. So we're assuming a conservative estimate of interest earnings at around fifteen thousand, which would allow you to have nine million dollars for the project. The second page then shows the payment schedule. And um, we have annual annual payments that slightly under seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If you scroll down a little bit further, Ron, you can see this is a fifteen-year term. And there are some interest rates at the bottom there. The interest rate that we award the sale of the certificates based on is that true interest cost rate, the TIC. So we're estimating that to be just under three percent. We do issue certificates of participation for lease purchase financing fairly regularly. The most recent issue that we did was for Rosemont, Apple Valley, Egan School District in April. And they were financing turf fields at right around this same dollar amount. Theirs was a ten-year term because it's limited to that for turf financing. And their interest rate was just slightly under two percent. So um, we don't get lots of bids for certificates of particip- participation, but we do still see nice low interest rates. So when we've issued bonds for you before, when we've done refunding transactions, we frequently have had five to ten bidders probably. For this type of transaction, we'd likely get two to five. But again, we still go through the competitive sale process so that we get you the lowest interest rate available at that day in the market. And um, demand for um, for municipal transactions has still been really high. Rates have been at historic lows. When we would issue these, where we have a dated date on there, you'll see February first of two thousand twenty-one. So we definitely have some cushion built into the rate just to make sure that we would be able to achieve these results.
And Jody, can you speak to, just real quick, before we turn it over to questions? We um, the reason, even though, and we've talked about that, if the board does approve the project at the June twenty-third meeting, we will start the planning process right away. We are suggesting the sale of the bonds for February specifically because of some of uh, some other debt um, plans that we have. And can you speak to that a little bit in terms of the refunding as well as the LTFN bonds?
For sure. So um, uh, you can issue tax-exempt debt up to ten million dollars in a calendar year and consider it to be bank-qualified. If it's bank-qualified debt that you're issuing, then banks and financial institutions get a tax advantage if they bid on your bonds. So because we're we get a limited number of bidders on these bond issues, we do find that we get more bidders if we're able to offer it as a bank-qualified transaction. We're scheduled to issue facilities maintenance bonds for you this fall. And you also have a refunding opportunity, which will allow us to save some taxes for your property owners. That will, those transactions will get you above the ten million dollar limit for calendar year two thousand twenty. So if we can hold off and issue the certificates of participation early in calendar year two thousand twenty-one, we don't have any refunding opportunities that we're currently recommending that you proceed with during that calendar year, nor would we have any other debt issues, tax-exempt debt issues that would get you over that ten million dollar limit that we're aware of. So that is the reason for the timing on waiting to issue the certificates of participation until um, early in calendar year two thousand twenty-one so that we can attract more bidders and a low interest rate. And that is what we did for Rosemont, Apple Valley, Egan School District, too. We issued theirs as bank-qualified, and that was really helpful to them. We heard from the underwriters that were bidding on the day that um, they um, that they submitted their bids at the rates that they did and were willing to be um, involved in the process because they were bank-qualified. So we think that is in your best interests. And um, as long as the timing will work out okay from a cash flow perspective related to the project, as we talked to Ron about it, he seemed to think that that was the best plan then, too.
And and just to um, give a a little bit more detail in terms of the uh, the process. If you remember in our levy, we levied for right around fifteen million dollars in the sale of these uh, bonds, uh, which was just over one point two million dollars a year for the actual payment. And so we are, in fiscal year twenty-one, will be levying for that dollar amount. If we are to do the sale in February, the way that Ellers has it put together is that we would make that first payment for fiscal year twenty-one for that right around seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The additional dollars that we don't spend then will be a negative adjustment on our next year's levy. So it were, our levy for this piece of it will go down by roughly five hundred thousand dollars, four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So it will be a benefit, um, the taxpayers will see a benefit in that the levy for this portion will actually go down because we're not spending the entire fifteen million dollars that we had in the lease levy component.
Yep. And you could request that adjustment for taxes payable in twenty twenty-one also. If you'd like the timing to play out that way, so.
Which is what we did, if if board members remember, we actually did that for this year's levy because last year, when we went through the levy process, we were anticipating that ECMAC would make a recommendation to do something sooner. And as you remember, we did the pause. So this year's levy actually had the negative adjustment adjustment for the entire one point two million. Um, and then we re-levied again this year, again, just to keep it as an option for the board to consider.
Yep. So you could re-levy at the estimated amount now of seven hundred and forty-one thousand roughly and then have that offset for the five hundred thousand, which would be kind of nice because then sort of phase in over the next two years.
So with that, um, I will turn it back over to Chair Oosthafy for any board questions as it relates to the financing piece or any other questions.
Uh, thank you, Ron. Um, I'm going to start first this. I'm going to start first this time. Help me better understand why we're front-loading the interest rate with the five percent coupon and going down into the future.
Okay.
Why is that?
Yeah, we're assuming a premium bid. So if you look at that sources and uses schedule, they're actually giving you some money upfront. And most of the underwriters have been submitting bids with a premium amount. So it's kind of like they're giving you some of the interest upfront, but then you are, there are higher coupons associated with those interest rates. So Ron, maybe if you have the sources and uses schedule, if you can pull that up again, that first page will show you the premium that we're anticipating, and this will all depend upon the bids that we get on the day of sale. But in this particular option, our best estimate, we're showing that premium of about four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And that's why we're only issuing also a par amount of eight million, seven thirty, because that premium amount then can be used as a deposit to your construction fund.
And if we issue nine million at a lower coupon rate, we don't get the premium, but we get lower interest rates? I'm trying to see where the benefit is if we're just playing hide the money.
Yeah, and it's not a hide the money. It's certainly possible that we won't get a premium bid, and we will need to issue the nine million, and that your coupons will be lower. And in that case, you know, we'll still end up getting a true interest cost rate likely of around that three percent. So the premium gets calculated into the true, the true interest cost rate is probably the more meaningful number for you to take a look at. That's, you know, really what you'll be paying net of the premium that you receive upfront from the underwriter. And it will, you know, it probably, it likely won't be eight million, seven thirty, because each underwriter puts together their bid depending upon what they think their buyers are going to want to see as they, as they sell your certificates of participation. So you're really not paying at a five percent rate, because you're getting that cash upfront of almost four hundred and twenty-five thousand that you can use towards your project costs. So it's really an amount that they're giving you in excess of the par as we're offering it. And we're just seeing that underwriters, as, you know, in general, are providing premium bids, but not always the case. So they certainly could structure it differently with different coupons for each of those maturities, and you'd end up issuing a little bit more with lower coupons, but still likely a true interest cost rate around three percent.
Okay. And this, and this keeps up from bumping up against limits. Basically, we borrow less, but we actually get more. Again, we're sort of playing, you know, hide the money. Okay.
Yeah, I don't think it's really a hide the money. They're just giving you some money upfront. So, and again, it's certainly possible that we would need to issue nine million dollars if the underwriter that gives us the lowest bid overall, based upon that true interest cost rate, doesn't provide you with a premium and simply has three percent coupons on their maturities. And that, and that certainly could happen.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Let's move to Kelsey. Kelsey, do you have a question regarding the financing?
You know, my, I just wanted to get the full picture, but I would say that, you know, we've been looking at this a lot, a long time. There's been different iterations with ECMAC over the last four, five years. And I really believe it's time to take some action in our district. We have already budgeted looking at this. And Rice Lake, I've been to Rice Lake. I, it's, they're using every bit of space imaginable. I just commend, like applaud the teachers and students and parents and every, all the staff there. I mean, I, principal, I mean, just because I think that it's a lot, as Jackie kind of, as Jackie pointed out. And so I think that this is just, you know, I'm really supportive of the direction that this is going. And I think that, again, I would just reiterate that while we're looking and moving forward with Rice Lake, I just think when we think of our whole district, we need to also address the undercapacity in our district as well, and really hear from our families and teachers and, you know, staff there. So I just don't want to ever, like, leave that off the table as part of this. But as far as Rice Lake, the addition moving forward, I'm supportive.
Thank you. Tanya?
No questions. I guess just a comment. So as Kelsey pointed out, this has been something that's been discussed for quite some time. And so from my perspective, and having sat on ECMAC, there's really, this is the short-term solution. And there were several short-term solutions that got narrowed down to this one. So it's, it would be nice if, if everything had worked out at the lower cost, but that's not where we're at. I do think we really need to be working that long-term solution that addresses capacity across our entire district, as well as the middle school and high school needs as well. And we know that there's just maybe some growing frustration that it's taking so long. So I don't feel like I would want to continue to delay, even if this doesn't feel like the most optimal solution. It's, I think it's the best option at this time for the short-term need.
Thank you, Tanya. Director Douglas?
Thank you. I also don't have any questions about this at this time. I feel like, given the circumstances, that the building code has changed, that's really beyond our control. And this is absolutely a necessary action that we need to take, in my opinion, especially having served on ECMAC and DPAC and communicated with families and parents at Rice Lake and seen and heard the experiences that they're going through, and especially listening to Margot. This is an issue that needs to be addressed right away, and I hope that this is something that we can continue to press forward and take action on quickly, both board action and the actual project, that this is something that can move along quickly. And I hope that we don't have any more hiccups or any delays, because this is, to me, an urgent issue. It's been something that's been talked about since before I even became a member of the board. And, but I also appreciate Tanya's comments and how important it is that we look at the holistic approach of the entire school district and how we operate. But Rice Lake is an immediate issue, and so I fully support moving forward, even though I'm not pleased about the increase in cost. I know that it's beyond our control at this point. So thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, Director Douglas. Director Muscata-Jones?
So my thoughts are, I don't have any questions on the financing. It's pretty straightforward, and I appreciate your work in trying to get us the best deal under the circumstances and understanding the code. My one comment I want to make, besides thank you to everyone for all your hard work and how long you've had to wait, and Margot, thank you for, you know, please tell your staff how much we appreciate them, you know, sticking with this while we're trying to figure this out. But, not but, and I want to say, what I'm really happy about in this whole thing is I think that doing an addition for Rice Lake, including the gym, is what's right for our students right now across the district. Changing boundaries now and then having to change it again in two or three years is not what's best for our students. And so instead of hastily figuring out any kind of boundary changes, let's take a holistic equity, look at where we're at, and really do it right. So for the good of our current students at Rice Lake, and the good of our entire district, it's time to move forward, in my opinion.
Thank you, Director Muscata-Jones. I had limited my questions to finance, so let me make some comments on the overall project at this point. From the beginning, I thought that we had limited our options very specifically focusing on Rice Lake. And be that as it is, that's fine, and I think the majority here is clearly in support of that. I still truly believe that we could add significantly more capacity for right now about the same amount, and definitely more, less on a per-student cost, if we looked at some other options for the short term. But I'm, you know, you're right, it is the short term. There has to be a longer-term consequence, you know, something that we have to do. Again, I still think that the ability to build a better option at a school that was designed for it is going to be better. I think we're going to be shoehorning in a lot of things into a very small space here. And I, you know, I'm confident that people can figure it out, but I still think that it's, it's going to be a much tighter space. And yeah, Margot, I've been there, I've seen, I've seen that, you know, my kids have played ball there, it's, it's tight. It does need improvements, but I'm just concerned that we are trying to do a lot on a, on a very small space. So, thank you.
Chair Oosthafie, just one last question here. It's so hard with this kind of medium mic waving at everybody, trying to chime in. I just want to make sure everyone's had a chance, if there's any other questions or any additional information board members would like to receive before next week, that we're still intending to bring this for you as an action item. Either tonight you can, you know, let us know if there's anything else you want or need, or between now and, you know, the end of the week, as we prepare the board packet. In your materials included the recommendations from the presentation on May twenty-sixth, so you had that as a reference as well, from my recommendations. And you've now had a chance to hear, you know, the budget presentation last week, kind of what our prediction and situation is right now legislatively, and then this new information here with the financing of this project, along with all the other recommendations, the other five recommendations there. So I just wanted to make sure you had every chance to ask any additional questions or any additional information you want from our team. So I'll pause there.
With that, let's start with Director Douglas.
I do not need any further information. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Kelsey Dawson-Walton?
No, I don't need any more information.
Thank you. Director Silence?
No, I have what I need.
Thank you. Director Muscata-Jones?
I'm good right now, thanks.
Okay. Thank you. None for me. Corey, back to you.
Okay. All right. Ron, anything else you want to add? Or I want to say thank you to Elaine and Jody for being here tonight with us and providing the information. Thanks for joining us on this virtual meeting.
Corey, this is Director Douglas. I just wanted to ask that somebody from administration connect with Jessica, since she was not able to be a part of this meeting, to make sure she has all the information she needs before our meeting next week.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Chair Oosthafie, do you want me just to take us on to our next agenda item?
Yep, you're up next, the strategic priority results.
All right. Thank you so much. And we have a large team kind of in the wings here, waiting to share with you tonight's priority results from our nineteen-twenty strategic priorities. And this presentation is really intended to really not be a very lengthy and depth report, based on a number of factors. And instead, our team's going to share really with you just some key achievements and some of the, you know, measures that we have available from each of the nine priority areas, as Anthony's pulling up the presentation here. I want to set a little context. As we know, this year's been like no other, on a lot of levels, as you've heard about so much since we went into, the school closures and distance learning are on March sixteenth. And that really has caused us, in some ways, to pause many efforts in some areas and significantly altered others along the way this spring. So there, there's been an impact, and that's been felt in our efforts around our priority results, as we had to make such a big shift during the school year. We are learning from that experience, as you've heard many times, and what has worked and what continues to not work and be our challenge. And we're going to use that learning as we move into the next efforts with our strategic planning, moving us into the 2021 school year, which we're still working on what that looks like. So a lot of moving parts here. But whether we're back in school in some modified way, whether we're in a hybrid model or some kind of remote or distance learning, the summary of this information does help us spring forward as we build in what you'll see in a little while, our future planning. So later in the meeting, you're going to see a preliminary draft of our operational plan, and those proposed priorities for the 2021 school year, and you'll have a chance to give any immediate feedback, and you'll have a chance to have a window to give us some additional feedback, as we continue to dial that in this summer, along with, you'll see some draft initiatives and priorities for the next two years beyond next year as well. So we start working towards a three-year calendar. In October, you'll, we still intend to provide you with kind of that annual state of the district report that includes our world's best workforce requirements. And then my goal is still in November, then, to try to begin to dial in those 21, 22 priorities as, you know, we, you know, start that budget cycle right around the same time. We're still trying to do that reset, even though we're, we're juggling the end of this year and launching the planning for the opening of the next school year. I know as a board, I want to acknowledge this as well, that as a board, you've really asked us this year to bring more data, bring more analysis to our work as we report out. And you've, you know, earlier in the year, you saw a lot of effort towards that. It's been more challenging the last couple of months, as we've had to shift so dramatically in distance learning. And know that with our new strategic plan, and you'll see it later, built in, there'll be a specific scorecards or vision cards for each strategic direction. So up to six different vision cards, along with monitoring reports that will, we will use throughout the year to give you regular monitoring updates and data updates to the board. So we'll be launching a new data approach, building off of what we've done historically. So with that, our members of our administrative team are here, they've been very patient. I just want to say thank you to our team members for being patient and holding on. And we'll present, and then we'll, if we can, it'd be probably best if we held questions till the end, gives our team a chance to go through the presentation, and then you can follow up with any comments or questions you have at the end. So with that, I'll turn it over to our cabinet and our district leaders. Thank you.
Who's up?
I'll get things kind of started here. So we've got several priority works to go through today, and they'll be jumping in in this order. So we'll be talking about pre-K, positive behavior intervention, family engagement, multilingual learners, employee recruitment and retention, ECMAC culture responsive instruction, employee identifies and respond to race and culture, and digital learning for all. We will start tonight with the pre-K update.
All right. Good evening, Chair Oosthafie, board members, Superintendent McIntyre, cabinet and special guests. Looks like I am the one that gets to set the bar for the night by going first, so I'll do everything I can not to mess this up, as I'm sure somebody has a timer going right now. So as you can see, pre-K is the first priority result that we will begin with. At every elementary site, student outcomes and measurements of achievement will be aligned, and pre-K will be integrated into all school processes. I'm going to kick it off and send it over to Carrie Cave, as she's going to start by talking about the highlights from this year. Carrie?
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to share some of the highlights that we have had in our pre-K work this year. From the side, you can see, one of the things we're super excited about is we, especially in our early childhood family ed team, took this on and really developed end-of-year success criteria to provide baseline data for incoming kindergarten students, embedded it with all four-year-old programs within our system. So this one-page flyer is going to be a great tool that staff, community members, you know, parents, guardians, all kinds of different population groups will be able to use just to kind of look at that. And there's some great language around there that we're not asking every four-year-old that's coming into, excuse me, five-year-old coming into kindergarten has all of these. These are just guideposts for them along the way. So a great tool, just to kind of put out as people have questions around that. Also, developed a visual representation. We have a à la carte model, as you all know, and it gets a little confusing who to ask questions to. So kind of made a visual flowchart, especially for our frontline staff to use if families or individuals come to them with questions. They have a visual tool to use to guide people in the right direction, instead of sending them multiple places. And then last, continue to create a system to more efficiently follow pre-K achievement as kids move up from our pre-K programs further in their educational journey.
Anthony, we're going to head on to the measurements and data piece. I just want to give a special thanks out to Catherine Pollam. She, she helped create the finalized version of the organizational chart. So linked in this presentation is that administrative oversight document that you can take a look at. We won't bring that up now, but it's something that's been a work in progress for a couple of years now. And so I appreciate with the leadership of Sally Neltmeyer and her team to get that document put to finalized. Also, the success criteria document is also linked in this presentation. I highly encourage you to take a look at that. That, that is a forward-facing document that our public and our staff are able to see. The team that was involved in creating that was across our system from teachers to support staff. And it was countless hours of going over this document and coming up with the final documents. So special thanks to that team. As you know, as we headed into distance learning, TS Gold, or TS Gold data for the spring was not completed or was incomplete due to this. And so we don't have completed data. There is some data that was collected throughout the year that can still be used and will still be used. But it is incomplete at this time due to distance learning. One thing I wanted to make a note of, just so you are aware, with the help of Jenna, John Choi, Aaron's dad. We asked her to complete a multiple studies for our system. And one of those studies was around early childhood retention. And just as we were heading into distance learning, Jenna had completed multiple studies that we haven't even had a chance to sit down and really digest and talk about. But I did want you to make aware of that. I made note in this measurements data because we're going to get some really good data from these studies, this being one of them. So wanted to give you a little background that these studies have been completed. And we're now going to be heading into the phase of really digesting that data for continued use moving forward. That completes the pre-K priority result. Chair, thank you.
I get to take the lead on the next priority results concerning positive behavior interventions and supports. The result reads, "All sites will be implemented, will implement culturally responsive, research-based, positive behavior intervention practices that include the use of trauma-informed and restorative practices." This is, and we're not going to highlights yet. I'm going to just make some introductory remarks. It is a little interesting to have general counsel on this particular group, but there are some pieces which are of great interest, at least in terms of my role. And one of the things that I look at oftentimes is policy, but also discipline numbers. Of course, you all know I was connected to the Minnesota Department of Human Rights settlement agreement that was reached with multiple districts, including the Oseo school districts. And so this work does link closely to that. This is our ninth year of, of doing this work. And we continue to increase our capacity to provide tiered interventions throughout the district. As many of you know, PBIS stands for Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports. It means using evidence-based frameworks for preventing problem behavior, providing instruction and support for positive pro-social behaviors and supporting social emotional behavioral needs of students. So in a nutshell, it basically means providing the right behavior intervention to the right student at the right time and the right amount. I will say also as an aside, it really does in some ways, it reflects and the intent is obviously to address overall discipline. But it is in some respects an end in itself because there are a number of requirements in Minnesota statute that, that essentially require implement, implementation of such methods. Just as an overall remark here, the Minnesota Department of Education has identified Oseo, the district and multiple eight schools within the district as exemplar schools because of the support of the district, the training those sites have received and the fidelity of implementation that has been employed. Those exemplar schools have included Elm Creek, Basswood, Edinburgh, Oakview, Rice Lake, Woodland and Oseo Middle. Now, I want to say that, that the fact that you are, are considered to have high fidelity to PBIS doesn't necessarily mean that the behavior issues in the, in your school are resolved. But it does mean that you're well-equipped with tools and systems to identify issues with precision, develop an action plan for potential issues and keep effective practices in place to consistently improve student results. And so with those introductory remarks, I'm going to move it to Jill and A, who's going to talk about the highlights.
Thank you, Tim. It's my pleasure this evening to share the highlights and accomplishments of this year's work. Added, we added an additional measure of fidelity by expanding the tiered fidelity inventory, the TFI, to include tier-two measurements. This year, our schools completed both the tier-one and tier-two tier fidelity inventories. The TFI metric serves as a useful reminder that high capacity and fidelity scores do not mean that all of your problems are solved. It means you are well-equipped with tools and systems to identify issues with precision, such as uneven implementation across buildings. Specificity in identifying, for example, inequity or disproportionality, an action plan around them to keep effective practices in place consistently and long enough to improve student results. This year, we also linked the Plan Do Study Act or the PDSA to each individual site improvement plans, behavioral goals. Sites were required to report out on their PBIS impact through explaining their PDSA Plan Do Study Act, which linked PBIS and district equity tools to each behavioral SIP goal. IM4 system utilized across sites to support the use and monitoring of tier-two evidence-based interventions. In partnership with the U of M, the addition of the IM4 problem-solving platform has enhanced teams' ability to match and monitor evidence-based behavioral interventions to students that require a tier-two level of social, emotional, behavioral supports. Continued restorative practices, practices and trauma-informed trainings. Restorative practice and trauma-informed trainings continue throughout the school year with professional development opportunities ranging from circle trainings, restorative chats, restorative discipline, strategies to work with students that have experienced trauma as well as adult self-care. Crest Hill Elementary also completed their second year of restorative practices implementation with successful results. Now I will turn it over to Kate Emmons, who will share our data.
Greetings, Chair Stoffey and board. Delighted as well to be here to talk about our work this year and then the measurements and the data associated with that work. So as you can see, this data goes through 2019. We have incomplete data as of this time for this end of this school year, but when that becomes available, it will be added to this graph. And as you can see from this graph, that over time, there have been improvements most, as you can see, in the area of special education. That this is results per 100 of students. So if a district has 5,000 students or 25,000 students, if we look at the discipline for, per rates per hundred, that we could look at this and compare it to other like bodies of students. So in special education, you could see in 2011, there were 20 incidences for discipline incidences for students receiving special ed services per 100 students, about one-fifth. And over time, that is about 10 or about, what is that now? Oh my goodness. What is 10 out of 100? What 10th about of them? So the rates for all students is in the gray and then general education is in the teal or the bluish number below. And as you can see, over time, our rates are, have been very low for both of those populations in and around about five students per 100. Now, we were only able to share the three slides with you, but if we were to break this down by race, as you know, as we have talked to you before and as we have shown you before, that many of these rates for discipline affect black students much more than it does white students. And that is something, again, that our teams are working on. Like both Tim and Jill said, by implementing over time and checking your fidelity, it gives you the ability to roadmap where you need to be, which is what our teams did with their PDSA's today. So our results are still not perfect. But if we would have stopped, we would have, and started with different initiatives along the way, we would still not, we would not have seen this growth. And again, even looking at the data by race, there is still a remarkable difference in our data for most students. And it has dropped significantly. Again, not perfect, and I hope anybody hearing me doesn't think that we think that this work is finished because it is not. But by implementing with fidelity, we can, schools can, we can as a district pinpoint where we need to get better. And thank you for your time, board.
All right. Good evening, everyone. It's Ryan. Family engagement, a system-wide plan will be developed to engage and empower families to support their students. And Anthony, and I'll just keep rolling along. We spent a lot of time on this last Tuesday. So we added an engagement section to the continuous improvement plans of sites and departments district-wide. And we started our engagement redesign planning phase began this month, including what we do. We have our individual interviews with board members scheduled for Thursday and Friday. So we're getting rolling on that. Our sites and departments primarily focused on PTO participation, curriculum nights, focusing on math, science and literacy, English language, culturally specific parent nights and circles, parent series, real talk parent nights. And quite a few student-led events, especially at our secondary schools, general family events on-site. And then they utilize the Epstein and Yaso models for engagement that we covered with all of our site and department leaders last year. Thank you.
Well, good evening, everyone. This is Rev. Thank you so much for giving us an opportunity to share some of our work with you. The multilingual learners priority result reads as follows. All sites will implement best practices for multilingual learners in, in parentheses, English learners. And my friend Ms. Nicholson is going to share the rest of this with you as she's the one who's primarily responsible for this area.
Good evening, Chair Stoffey, school board members. It's nice to be sharing with you again. It's a record, I think, twice in one year for me. The way that we focused this year was really around increasing the capacity of staff through developing their knowledge, skill and will to engage in the use of differentiated instructional strategies to support language learning success in our school. And so some highlights around that work, the first being that we developed, led and supported a district-wide qualitative data collection that had system equity tools embedded throughout the process in order for our staff to learn more about one face of the experience of multilingual students in our schools. But then we could take that and use that to inform the work that we were doing throughout the year. And that was also connected to the really large professional development effort that we did with more than 300 of our district equity leaders through our equity team seminars this year. Focusing on raising consciousness, measuring conviction and aligning the commitments at each school and within each equity team to reflect an asset-based model for our multilingual students in our schools. And that was something that also provided us with a different way to work with staff and really had it become something that was a more of a collaborative effort between our team and the teams at each school and customizing something that met the needs of their school community. And then additionally, we've continued to expand our partnership with Hamlin. As I've shared with you over the past couple of years around English learners in the mainstream project where we have cohorts of teachers who are supporting each other through collaboration that's ongoing and professional development that's ongoing throughout this whole year. So we had that established at eight sites this school year. And some measurements and data connected to those efforts. So the EAL shadowing work that we did, we actually had more than 7,000 different data points that were collected by staff throughout the system. And what we focused on is the opportunity for students to engage in academic discourse, speaking and listening. And what we found is by far the vast majority of what's happening in our classrooms for our multilingual students is that they spend time listening to their teachers and that teachers are doing a lot of the talking. And this is really important for us because we know that one of the most critical elements of language development is oral language development and that supports both literacy and math content knowledge development. So that helped us to gather some different types of information about what's actually happening for our students and what's their experience in our classrooms. Besides some of the standardized test data that we have collected over time and also then informed some of the work that we were doing through equity team seminars and at individual schools around ways that we can foster more student interaction in the classroom and get our students talking about the content and using the language so that they are actively engaged. With the E-Team seminars, we had a seminar in the fall and our last session was at the end of February. After that session, we asked for some feedback. More than 70% of all the respondents indicated that there were significant impacts to their capacity, consciousness and conviction as well as commitment to expand equitable learning environments for multilingual students. The ranges were different for each of those questions, but in all of them, more than 70% indicating a moderate or high level of impact for them. And then lastly, with our Elm project work, we now have 14 of our EAL teachers who are working as Elm coaches in our elementary schools. But eight of our school sites, and they are working with more than 100 of their teacher colleagues throughout the year to collaborate and plan for ways to better support the multilingual students that they're working with in their classrooms as well as provide ongoing professional development for the staff. So that they are able to support students in accessing rigorous, credible content. And that's our section.
As you know, the work in human resources and for all of our leaders in our system is around recruitment and retention of a diverse staff that mirrors a population of our students. And so tonight I just highlight to highlight four areas that we've included this year as additional areas of focus. As you know, we've had the Teacher of Color Mentorship Program for the last three years and we've actually been able to enhance that program. We received some grant funding. And so we've been able to have our mentors and our mentees do some observations of one another in an informal way in order to provide ongoing feedback and coaching and then just some guidance before their actual formal observations. We've been working to increase our talent pools by using LinkedIn and Facebook. And we've also done some targeted work on our homepage. So we've redesigned our website to attract more people right to our website with our career links. And we've been partnering with our community organizations. We've been getting feedback on our website. We've been working with community partners such as Brooklinks with our Brooklink interns. We've also been working with them to get feedback on videos and what would attract staff of color to our system so that we could make videos, why work here videos and such. And finally, we've been partnering with St. Cloud State University with our special education program on, with our Grow Your Own program to try to entice more of our students to become teachers and then in particular go into the field of special education teaching through the St. Cloud State program. And then finally, new this spring, our ESPs received a grant through the Federation of Teachers and Education Minnesota. They have a new grant for mentoring. And so we've been partnering with our ESP labor leaders in order to hire and then assign mentors and mentees. Now, that happened right when COVID was beginning. We still did go ahead with the program because we knew that our new ESPs would need additional support during that COVID time. So we have just a couple of months of work with that ESP team and they will be continuing next year. And then in terms of the data, if you look at the, I'm sorry, this is small, but you can see it in your packet. The data on the right is familiar data. Those are two charts that you've seen every year for the past seven years in terms of our staff of color, both in our licensed, our non-licensed, as well as our administrative teams. On the left-hand side, some additional data is included for you this year. And part of what we have asterisk is that in the 1920 data, we only have the first half of the year data. So you can see if you project out for the rest of the year, where we would fall for the end of the year. As I highlighted last year, with the turnover rate for teachers of color, we believe that the addition of the Teacher of Color Mentorship Program has really decreased our turnover rates. And it already went down to only 1.3%, 1.13% for this last year. So we're going to focus again on our Teachers of Color Mentorship Program. And then hopefully with some of our other mentorship programs that will enhance, enhance our retention rates for our other staff.
The next strategic priority is around the work of Akmac and specifically that implementation of the enrollment and capacity management framework will lead to increased community trust in the school district through engagement and long-range planning for enrollment and building use. This year, Akmac met a total of eight times, seven of which occurred between September and December of last fall. The group consisted of 25 community members, 12 staff, two board members and a representative from World Architects and Engineers. We continued in our tradition. We continued in our tradition of holding meetings in our school buildings, which this year included Zane Wood Elementary, Oakview Elementary, Weaver Lake Elementary and Brooklyn Middle School. This allowed Ekmac members to take what they saw in the numbers and the data and actually apply it to the physical space. The actual work of Ekmac was significant as we focused on creating recommendations to address overcapacity conditions at the elementary and secondary levels by the end of December. The work included an examination of the current year's enrollment data and ensuing five-year projections. From there, Ekmac made observations regarding schools that were in need of capacity relief based on targeted class size capacity calculations. From there, Ekmac considered options to address overcapacity conditions at the elementary and secondary levels. These options include an addition at Oakview Elementary with a boundary change, an addition at Weaver Lake Elementary and the creation of a boundary at that school in addition to keeping the STEM Magnet School Program at the same site. An addition at Rice Lake Elementary with no boundary change. The construction of a new elementary school at the site that is owned by the district in Northwest Maple Grove. The classroom addition at Maple Grove Senior High and increased lunchroom capacity at all three comprehensive high schools along with increased media center capacity at Park Center Senior High. Once the recommendation was complete for addressing overcapacity conditions at elementary and secondary sites, Ekmac reviewed space needs for both community education and student services and then made some observations related to undercapacity conditions at various elementary schools in the district. Unfortunately, because of the pandemic, the final two meetings of the year were canceled, which ended our work prematurely, specifically the creation of our annual summary of progress report. And on to the results. As I mentioned, the full recommendation to address overcapacity conditions at elementary and secondary sites was submitted to administration in December of 2019 and was part of the work of the oversight task force and building a better future process, which we've discussed in detail. A detailed report of the recommendation was given to the school board at the January 14th, 2020 school board work session. As part of our normal year-end process, we surveyed Ekmac group members to collect feedback on the year's work and to determine the level of trust that exists related to long-range planning for enrollment and building use per the strategic priority. The results of the survey is anticipated to be available in the next week because it's, the closing date is actually next week. And this will help guide our planning for the next school year and those results will be available at that time. Finally, the annual summary of progress that I mentioned earlier was not able to be developed this spring because of those canceled meetings. So we will do a full review of the work from this past year with the full Ekmac group at the first meeting, which is tentatively scheduled for October.
All right, I'm happy to introduce the culturally responsive instruction priority result, where all sites will engage in the use of culturally responsive instructional strategies. And I am going to pass it on to Jill Laney once again, as she's going to share the highlights from this year. Jill, take it away.
Thank you, Patrick. Good evening again, Chair O'Staphy, school board members and Superintendent McIntyre. It is again my pleasure this evening to share the highlights and accomplishments of this year's work. All of the accomplishments you see are really due to a collaboration between the Departments of Learning and Achievement, Educational Equity and Student Services, which provided professional learning experiences and curriculum resource alignment. Culturally responsive pedagogy training offered using the CLEAR model was offered using the CLEAR model. Learning leaders received ongoing training at learning leader meetings through co-facilitation amongst DOE, LNA and Student Services staff on identified topics using the CLEAR model and CLEAR Solutions Framework to guide learning. The National Urban Alliance CLEAR Professional Development was also provided on May 1st, System Staff Development Day for elementary and secondary teachers across Osseary schools. District staff presenting at National Summer Institutes. District staff were selected to present at the National NUA Summer Institute in this, in June of this year. M D has also recognized the CLEAR model, CLEAR Solution Framework training as a blueprint for best practices in educational racial equity work. Curriculum Resources and Alignment, we continue to expand on our elementary classroom library project that began last year. We had the opportunity to include second grade level this year to ensure that each of our students could see themselves reflected in the books they interacted with. Both elementary literacy and social studies curricular resources were reviewed this year to ensure that our current materials were more aligned with our beliefs about culturally responsive materials. And finally, our N U A cohorts make, are comprised of six elementary schools, which are Fair Oaks, Palmer Lake, Elm Creek, Oakview, Garden City and Woodland Elementary. And they're the ones that participated throughout the 2019-20 school year. I will now turn it over to Dr. Hillstrom to share our data.
Good evening, everyone. So again, we have our six sites and as you know, the MCAs have not, will not occur this year or did not occur this year. And so actual data as it relates to some of those specific markers is difficult to get, but I do have qualitative data from the principals as it relates to the NUA work that I'll share in a minute. But we've had just, our culture responsive pedagogy work is not just the NUA. It's not just CLEAR. It's, it's really a deep collaboration between, as Jill said, all the departments and LNA sponsors so much of this work and May 1st, they, they had over 20 sessions that they had put together for our staff to participate in just deep rigorous learning opportunities and they continued off. That's just one example of the quality and the magnitude of the offerings that they continue to work and lead and provide the collaboration with. So really grateful for that. But the, the surveys and the so forth coming back from that were just phenomenal across the work. So really want to recognize Robin and Jeremy and their team for that work as I move into providing some qualitative data around some of the experiences that principals have with us. So Sean Stevens is moving into a cohort next year and he had spoken that his experiences with NUA have literally changed the way he looks at education and the opportunities that educators provide our students. David Branch has been part of a cohort for several years now. It would say that being part of NUA cohort has elevated my teachers' understanding and implementation of CLEAR. NUA strategies were at the forefront of most professional learning teams at Garden City. Before COVID-19, we were seeing data that showed improved student engagement, time on task and improved reading results. Combining NUA and CLEAR allowed the students to see themselves in the curriculum, offered more voice and choice in activities and clearly expanded teachers' understanding of the importance of centering teaching and instruction in the lives of students. I'll share a quick word from Sarah Smith. NUA has been incredibly valuable at Palmer Lake. The teachers who will participate in the cohort are sharing that the strategies they are learning are implemented applicable or immediately applicable to the classroom. The presenter is highly skilled at modeling how to use the strategies. So teachers do minimal work to actually be able to implement them. Beth Nass has also got some comments about NU training as a valuable tool that has helped Elm Creek teachers provide culturally responsive instruction. Teachers appreciate the training and the immediate, the immediate ability to implement. Bill Kundeck, we continue similar comments with our continued work with the National Urban Alliance puts neuroscience support culturally responsive instructional strategies at the hands of Oakview teachers. Our collective racial equity work centers and enlists at high intellectual practices for our Huskies. And I'll give you a quick word from Sarah Lubie. NUA has been incredible for my staff as they have been looking for instructional strategies to put into place that amplify student voice and really push their thinking around instruction to meet the needs of all kids rather than just doing what we have been doing for the last 15 years. She wanted to grab some of the more genuine voices from teachers, so I'll just add a couple of her teachers' voices as I, as I close my comments. NUA has provided our teachers, this is from the teachers in her building. NUA has provided our teachers with specific and intentional strategies that have the potential to transform instruction that benefit all students. And I'll, I'll leave with one more. The NUA sessions this year have been transformative for my students' learning and my teaching. The engagement strategies we have learned target all learners, no matter where their ability, where their ability and provides hands-on learning. I can use all different subject areas. We are really focused on incorporating the CLEAR model into the lessons to be, to be much more relevant for our learners. So I'll end with that to give you some of the overview of, of how the work is landing with our leaders and our teachers in our system.
All right, we're heading on to the priority result of employees identifying and responding to race and culture. I get to share the highlights here. Really what it comes down to our, our, our big highlights here is the training. As you are aware, DOE in collaboration with multiple other departments and staff have created Equity Foundational Training 1.0 and 1.5. For this year, we continued the 1.0 E F T training for new staff. We were able to offer new teachers this training through new teacher workshops. ESPs also had an ESP-only training in August. There were two dates provided for that. And there were also opportunities throughout the school year for new staff and ESPs to attend makeup sessions if they were to have missed the August sessions. For E F T 1.5, this was our year to implement that for the first time. There was train the trainer sessions throughout the summer to prepare site teams and department teams to prepare for training staff in this current school year. There was ESP training as well in August. There were two dates provided for ESPs only. But the majority of the training was completed at sites and through departments, which the majority of that training occurred in the first trimester of our school year. Now I'd like to pass it on to Rev to talk about the results from the survey data following the E F T training this past year.
Thank you, Patrick. You can see the, the survey data on the slide there. I won't read it all to you, but you can see just this, just impressive number when you combine the agree and strongly agree. I believe all of these are over 90% in most of these areas. I believe one of them might be slightly below that. But the numbers are staggering and the questions are pretty poignant. Learning about the influence of race and culture on student learning will help further our journey towards accomplishing the district mission. And you've got 97% there. And in our current reality and our civil unrest, this is definitely the training that people are leaning into and the resources that they're, they're using to utilize the ability to stay engaged in this work and be authentic while providing themselves a platform to really address critical issues. So I'm very, very proud of this work and grateful for my team and for the leadership of the district to be able to work with us and create the space for this collaboration across the entire system. E F T 1.5 had similar data if you look at it. But just overall, the first question again, developing skills that will enable me to identify and respond to the influence of race and culture on learning will better equip me to contribute to our district's mission. People are understanding that our system and we're providing them the tools to make this journey possible. But race does matter in our conversations, more now probably than we were aware of before. We're more mindful and more conscious of it. So I'm excited about the data that suggests that the tools that we have provided people are effective at helping them engage. And we know as we are planning on returning to this next year, we are going to have to address those issues head on and we have the tools to do that. So very, very happy with the results.
Good evening, Chair O'Staphy, Board, Superintendent McIntyre and colleagues and community. This is Anthony Paternas, the Executive Director of Technology, and I'm here tonight to share with you some updates related, related to our digital learning for all priority work. To go back to the statement that drives the heart of this work is that students will experience learning that is personalized in path, place and pace through strengthening teaching and learning practices that support student success. And as we talk about the evolution of this strategic priority over the last many years, you will notice that intentionally technology is that, is not defined within the language of this priority work because it really is about instructional pedagogy. And that's really where we've shifted our work over the last three years. With the, the COVID-19 pandemic and the shift into distance learning, there was a lot of opportunity that came that I think accelerated and amplified some of the work that we've been trying to accomplish over the last couple of years. And I would like to start to highlight what we've gone through and accomplished this school year in particular. As you know, we're in a revised DL4A model and this is really year two of our multi-year phase of implementation, which started a focus at the, at the middle school. We had a study this year that reviewed and explored elementary technology and technology integration, which we presented to the board in February around our findings within that study, launching many focus groups at every single elementary school, collecting survey data and really understanding what is the instructional need and what are the tools that are best going to support that as we move forward with our work in Osseary schools. We developed a pre-K through five implementation plan to support technology and technology integration. We implemented our revised DL4A plan at the middle school, which include, included targeted professional develop, development with our staff at the middle school level. It included ongoing professional development with all our learning leaders to support them in their leadership around the digital learning for a, for a model. And it included monthly digital learning walks that I had with the leadership teams at each one of those middle schools to understand how we were progressing and with the integration of the work in particular at the middle school throughout the year. We again provided ongoing support for high school. High school was the target focused in our Phase One, which was last year with our transition from iPads to Chromebooks at that level. So we had several professional development opportunities that occurred at the high school level as well as throughout our system. In particular, we had 293 staff members K through 12 participate in the digital learning path, place and pace pathway learning professional development model that they met throughout the school year in their system, monthly system PDs, where they focused intentionally around the digital learning resources and how to create personalized learning for their students to accelerate their achievement. We also did a transition from distance learning and as was evidenced with some of the survey data and initial data that we looked at, six through 12, which has been our focus for the last two years, we saw far less challenges due to our intentional digital learning for all work that has been occurring at those sites. Preparing teachers with our learning management systems and the tools and the digital resources and getting the correct tools in the hands of, of staff and students to ensure that success. As we continue to move forward, thinking about elementary, we at least brought the elementary plan forward. We know how we're going to continue to move our work forward and have ongoing conversations. And again, as I said, distance learning afforded some opportunities for us to, to learn some things and amplify our continued work around this. Looking at some of the measurement data, there were several pieces of data that had been presented to the school board throughout the year. Initially, back in October, we brought forward the Promising Practices Study data where we focused really looking at the high school level with that first year of implementation. And we saw a greater level of success with student outcomes for teachers who are really engaging in that path, place and pace and that digital learning framework. The, the Promising Practices Study was, was to a certain degree conducted still in the, as we were leading into COVID-19. So there are some data elements that we're going to continue to process through and look at being able to bring forth some ongoing data, again, looking at how middle school went through this school year as well. February 11th, at the work session, we brought forward our elementary plan that was developed with recommendations to the board of our work moving forward, which we're going to have to do in kind of some multi-tiered phases to actually accomplish everything that, that we're looking at bringing forward. Again, as I mentioned in the highlights, we had several professional development opportunities and we've had a professional development data demonstrate high satisfaction from teachers with their training and their ability to take the tools and the skills to implement within their classrooms. We initially presented some of that data at October 8th work session. And we've had additional data collected again through that 293 teachers that went through the pathway and we're still processing through that data from the May 1st professional development session that occurred remotely for all staff. But there were many sessions that were focused around digital tools and path, place and pace and how that integrates in with our, our equity work as well. We also been looking at ongoing technology use, which we presented throughout distance learning as well. But ongoing technology use data continues to demonstrate high levels of engagement with student learning in grades six through 12. But ongoing technology use data continues to demonstrate high levels of engagement with student learning in grade six through 12 with the work that we have been intentionally focused on over the last two years. And excited to look at how our continued work as we expand into the elementary with our digital tools and focus professional development, expand upon the results that we are seeing so far. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Superintendent McIntyre.
Yeah, thank you. So I just want to say quickly, thank you to our team. Thank you all for presenting what might be one of the strangest years for us to present results on because of all that's happened. And I also needed to thank you and all your work with our building leaders, our building staff, our teachers and all the staff in our buildings for continuing to work hard to implement our strategic priorities while the model of delivery of school basically changed overnight within just a few days this, this spring. So despite that dramatic change, what you'll see here is that we did have some key achievements and we did have some, some success with some of the priority results. And really today or tonight, our goal was to give you kind of three to five key achievements and also some data around some of the efforts that happened during the year. And I, I can't speak loudly enough or say frequently enough how I believe this team that presented tonight and so many others has stepped up and went over and above what was required of them all year, but especially the last few months. So with those comments like Chair O'Stoffey, I'll turn it back to you to facilitate board member responses with any comments or any questions for our team as they're the best to provide answers.
Okay, thank you very much Superintendent McIntyre and thanks for everyone who has been presenting. With that, let's start with Director Dawson-Wilton. Kelsey?
You always start with me. So I don't really ever have a chance to really, um, I don't know if that's on purpose or, but okay, so.
No, no, I, I can go to somebody else.
You know, I think that I, my first question is, can I just, I just need some clarification of what we're asking. What do you, what? What are you asking for? Like, is there, because these are, we're moving into new priorities. These are the previous priorities that we have. And so are there sun setting? Or they're being operationalized?
Well, I can jump in there, Kelsey. Thanks for asking. So you will see some transition into the new plan on some of the same topics or priorities when we get into there. But really this, this is an opportunity for you to ask any clarifying questions about the parties up for this past year, like you said, or just any general comments that you have as you listen to the team share their feedback.
Okay, um, well, thank you to everybody. That was, that's a lot of work that's been happening. I do just have some comments and thoughts around. So I feel like this is going to be random just because we heard so many things. So I'm trying to just look through my notes here, but looking at discipline and PBIS, you know, again, I understand that there is only three, you know, you were only able to have so many slides, but continuing to not understand, I mean, the issue is really around the disproportionality of the disciplinary actions, whether it's regarding, you know, PBIS or where we're going. So I just would, I just, I guess, again, urge us to just keep that in mind. And with PBIS, how does that, the philosophy with PBIS impact or mesh or with SROs? I'm just curious of like how that they work together. Do they not work together? Is, you know, just kind of how does that work? Or what's the thought behind that?
So this is Kate Emmons and I can maybe somewhat answer that. And the question is, or the positive behavior interventions and supports is about building a school culture and developing interventions that are matched to the student. So the, the intent of PBIS, all of the work around this positive behavior, the, the establishing your three to five positive behavior expectations, teaching and reteaching, and then using data is to build a strong culture and it's student centered and should have a strong student voice in it. It is my understanding, I'm not in the building, so if there's a principle here, that an SRO generally gets involved at the point of an incident. The intent of all of our work with PBIS is to develop a culture so that the incidents don't happen.
Okay, so I thought SROs, I thought the argument to have retain SROs was because they were building relationships with our students, but maybe that's not, I'm not.
No, I think that that's a fair statement too. Now that you say that, Kelsey, that may, or that makes sense. So I can understand it. So maybe Corey would like to weigh in on that, somebody who has more information about SROs than I do.
What I might just weigh in really quickly, Kate, and Sarah, Sarah Vernig wasn't able to join us tonight. I think she might have some of the best insight as it relates to some of those interactions. Yes, I mean, I'll, I'll piggyback on what, on what Kate said. I mean, one of the things that SROs, or I shouldn't say SROs, PBIS is really intended to address is to, is to address those, address the climate, climate of the building and the atmosphere in the building so that you don't get to the point place where you're actually calling in an SRO in an exigent circumstance. So I think it does relate in that regard. You know, Kelsey, it's a good question. I, I think that, and this is something that I think the building principals would want to weigh into as, as well. But I think that certainly there's, there is a notion that SROs in the building are, are expected to develop those, those relationships with students as well. I don't know that it necessarily relates to the PBIS work. And I'm not clear on whether or not we've run any SROs through PBIS, PBS framework or training. But that has generally been, you know, that's usually involved in situations where it's, it's dealing with discipline before it it gets to the point of an exigent circumstance.
Now, I'll just jump in, I'll just jump in just to piggyback off both of those. I think that, you know, to Kate's point, it's about building that culture in the building. I think as part of this, the latest contract that we brought before the board and some of the additional language, it was about training and requiring our SROs to go through some of the training, whether it's our, our equity training and it's specifically called out PBIS training so that they understand the, the culture that we are seeking to establish through PBIS in our building and they can align with that and help to support that in their role as, as SRO.
Okay, so you're saying that SROs, the training they are going to go, all they have or will be going through PBIS?
That's one of the expectations that's called out in the contract.
Okay, it's an expectation or are they?
That is our expectation that yes, they will be going through, the SROs that are in our buildings will be going through training, including PBIS. So that's one of the trainings that we are requiring of our SRO, SRO officers that will be in the buildings.
So is, is PBS just learning about it? And I know, you know, there's a lot of positive pieces of it and then there's some, of course, downfalls of it, but I know that we're, you know, we've been recognized at some of our schools for being able to execute it and things like that. But is it done through, is there a racial equity component to that of a lens? Looking at how we're working with all of our students, particularly our students of color?
Am I taking this one? Is that the intent, the original intent? When we first started working with MDE and the University of Minnesota with PBIS, there was not a racial equity lens. That was nine years ago. In the intervening time, the, that has changed as our work in the district has changed. And it is very much so an equity lens because that is through the lens through which all of our work is done. And many of you may remember the first partner that I had in this work was Wendy Lowberg and the second partner was Aston Osai. And when Aston was in this position, was in Sarah's position, we started our equity journey. Well, more so maybe than had, it is, it certainly became stronger. And at that time, we started looking at the PBIS, like the three to five positively stated behavior expectations and saying, well, whose lens is that? Is that me as a, as a middle class white female? Or are we getting our parents and our students involved in that? So for the last six years, give or take six years, we have said that this is a lens, like lens of Osseo area schools is PBIS through an equity lens, through the lens of the people it affects. It is not like we are trying to train students to be all well behaved students. That is not the intent and that is, it is what our intent is, is to make sure that our cultures in our schools are strong enough and represent the people in them so that the students and families feel like they belong and are able to participate to the greatest extent possible so they, they can achieve to their highest potential and go on to live the lives that they want to lead. Not the life that I, as a white, middle class female, want them to lead.
Thank you for that. I just, I really appreciate that explanation. And I just think that I, I see a strong connection between our messaging around SROs and the expectations or what is in the contract and just being really explicit about that. And the PBIS and our strategies, I think they, they, they go to me, they, they tie together. I will leave it at that. My next question was Laurel. Do you know on your chart, how many teachers, staff of color have left the district? What that percentage is?
Well, for last year, we only had a 1.13% leave for teachers of color. So our turnover rate was just a tiny bit over 1%. And I can get you the exact numbers, Kelsey, of the number of teachers of color that we have. It's, I don't want to say it incorrectly. So I can email that to you and all board members if you want.
I'll let somebody else go.
Thank you. And thank you, Director Dawson-Wilton. And Corey, if you could, the question, what is the linkage between SROs and suspensions or anything along that line? Could you please clarify that? Because I'm not sure that was clear.
Well, SROs don't give suspensions. Our administrators do suspensions and disciplinary action is a school. We, you know, our administrators are the ones that give out discipline where our SROs would be, it would be involved if there's any, you know, illegal or laws being broken. But I think to Ron's point earlier, we're trying to connect stronger to that element of support. So in addition to PBIS, restorative practices, mental health, trauma-informed care, all those things are listed in our contract that are going to be required of our SROs to participate in or be a part of moving forward, along with the evaluation process of, you know, we haven't had a strong evaluation component to our contracts in the, in the past. So building on the accountability of, of those efforts. So I guess that's a short answer, Mike, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, no, that, that clarifies it. Thank you. And I just want to get that clarified before we moved on to next. Let's start with, or let's move to Director Simons. Tanya, any questions or comments?
Yes, I'm gonna have to go through my notes as well here as we move through this. So first of all, it's a tremendous volume of work and I just want to recognize all of this work from the district level all the way down to each and every single building and each and every single classroom. So thank you to everybody in the district involved in making these priorities come to life for the benefit of our students. And I really appreciated how Kate kind of really talked about that, that outcome in regard to PBIS. But really I think those, that's the outcome we're looking for from all of our strategies is for our students to all feel that the school, their, their, the, the school culture is a place where they belong and where they can shine brightly and where their potential will be served. And that we, we will serve their potential and help them meet their potential. I really see that throughout this work. So, so the second piece, I have some questions. We've talked about data and we've, but data is not results. So I hope you know that when I ask challenging questions, it is because I care very deeply about the work and about the outcomes that we want to achieve. So I think we're getting better about identifying the success criteria and the results. So I did see that in many of these presentations. But I still saw a lot of data. I still kind of about how many people are participating in something or having X number of implementations. I didn't see as much true linkage to how are our students' outcomes improving or what was the intended outcome as far as, as our students or our staff? And did we achieve that for that particular priority? So I just continue to challenge you again, good progress, but continue to challenge that in all of them. One example of that was in the culturally responsive instruction. There was data points, but I thought was most valuable was the testimonies because that really talked about improving time on task, improving reading. So when I say results, like those were the type of things that I saw as results. And so the more we can do, again, connecting that to what did we want that work to do as an outcome for our students? And then did that happen is kind of where I'm getting at that. The employees, the race and culture work. Again, I thought some really good data on employees believing that it will benefit their work in the classroom. But that's a self-reported survey. And so how do we know that it's benefiting the classroom and that it is changing some type of practices? So that would be the type of results that I'm looking for there as well. Let me look a little bit more. The PBIS information that was really helpful to know about the number of occurrences in that trend line. But again, if we can get some more detail into that as well as more results kind of driven information as to is there a link between the schools that were recognized for their work and outcomes for those schools as well? So again, could have same kind of theme. So it's a good information. And it really, that trend line is great progress, but we want, we need to see more of that. In the multilingual learners, I really liked kind of hearing that what we found was that there needed to be more opportunity for the students to speak versus listen. So again, that, that might have been, was that the objective of what we're trying to do? What other objectives were we trying to see realized? And did we realize that? Family engagement, lots of great things that we're doing. But how do we know that's really engaging families? So we're doing lots of things with the families articulate that they feel that that's the engagement that they want or that's delivering on their needs for their kids. So again, very good work. I really appreciate the information. I thought another thing that, oh, one more, one more before I kind of close my comments, but the DL4, Digital Learning for All, the promising practices presentation was one of the most insightful and impactful linkages of data and outcome that I've seen. And that was a very impressive review of the information. And that's what I'm hoping to continue to see more of as we do all of our work. How can we be really getting tangible about linking certain practices to student outcomes? And continuing to spread that great learning of those promises practicing, promises, promising practices is that we do more of that. And as we do more, we have to, there's things we have to stop, right? So in my world, and I'm sure everybody in education feels this too, like we can't just keep doing more and more and more. What do we have to pause? Or what do we have to stop doing that's not as effective as the new things that we want to do? So I really want to avoid just more, more, more. And this, this was a big volume of work. So I appreciate that. The last comment that I'll make, so we had nine priorities, I think, that we reviewed and diversity, inclusion, and equity was very apparent to me in all of those areas. So recently, there's been a lot of concern that we're not committed to equity or equity work. And so I think we need more of sharing about what we're doing in this space so that we can continue to have the communication. we can continue to have the, um, communication and the trust that this is work that we are doing, that we're committed to and is truly throughout everything we do in this district. So that was a big highlight to me. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Simons. Let's, uh, move to, uh, Director Muscata-Jones, uh, if you could have any comments or questions for the team.
Thanks Chair Ostaffy. Um, first of all, I want to say to each and every one of you, thank you so much for all your hard work. Um, it's evident in, um, your passion for the work and how you even present it. And I know it's difficult to be here for so long and to go through all of this. Um, so I appreciate it. I appreciate, appreciate the, um, pre-K, um, kind of the, what we want kids to know when they go into kindergarten, um, over, uh, sheet. It's very well done. I'm gonna steal it. Just kidding. Uh, so I appreciate that. Um, I appreciate, um, the acknowledgement that, yeah, under PBIS and our, our discipline practices that we've still got a ways to go. Um, I'd like to dig into that, um, more. And I just want to say that, um, when I'm asking, um, for things in the letter that I wrote, it's because I know that we are all a team and that we can level up a little bit here. We've done such a good job of looking at things through an equity lens that now it's time to level up to an anti-racist, uh, lens. So I appreciate, um, you understanding that call, uh, to further action. Um, I love the multilingual learner, um, approaches that you're working with. Um, Krista and I super appreciate that. Um, I appreciate all the cultural stuff, the deep, the, Anthony, your work is again amazing. So I just, um, I've taught college, I've taught teachers how to teach, I've taught at a lot of different places and, uh, we've got some really top-notch people here and I super, um, I wish that I had the words to express how grateful I am to be with a bunch of, um, with a group of staff, administrators, teachers and families that really want to do what's right for every single one of our children. So that's where I'm at right now. You'll hear more from me with our next strategic plan.
All right. Thank you, Director Muscata-Jones. Uh, Director Douglas, any questions or comments?
Uh, yes, Chair Ostaffy, I do. Um, but before I, um, share my thoughts and opinions, I just wanted to reach out to Director Dawson-Wilton. Um, Kelsey, it seemed like you had more to say, but you stopped partway through your questions. And so I just wanted to make sure you had the opportunity to finish saying, um, your comments and questions if you had more.
Luke can't hear you, Kelsey.
Um, I appreciate that. I just think for, out of respect for everybody's time, I, um, I will reserve anything else for, um, maybe later in the conversation tonight, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, um, I will try to be brief. I did take some notes, so please bear with me for a second, but, um, I just wanted to start out by saying thank you to the entire team, the administration and all the people who have come together, um, to provide us with this really brief summary of the really deep work that we've been doing. Um, I know that as a board member, uh, we've been getting lots of updates and we're continuously being updated, um, about the work that's happening. Um, but, uh, for our community, I just wanted to share that this has been, um, really ongoing work that we've invested a lot in and this is just a really, really high-level update and does not really encompass all the work that's been done. So I just wanted to give a shout out to all of the team members involved with the, the really hard work and, um, sharing of the data in such a brief way must have been really difficult for you because there is so much there. Um, what I wanted to touch base about with, was, um, I wanted to thank Patrick and Carrie for your update on pre-K and, um, specifically the creation of a system to more efficiently follow our pre-K achievement as they move through our grade levels. I think that's something as board we have asked for and I really appreciate the work on that. I think that it will help give us better insight into how we can improve those programs and the, um, the results of the programs. Um, that's one thing that we, we often talk about how reading, um, is important and developing those skills earlier, but we don't often have ways to track or see how those initiatives work in the later grades. And so I really hope that this will allow us to progress, progress through that and develop a better way of following those kids and, and determining what initiatives are helpful and which ones are not. Um, uh, Tim and Jill Lemay and Kate Emmons, um, when we talked about PBIS, I just, every time we talk about it, I just feel, um, an incredible sense of purpose. Um, the, the PBIS work that we do has always been something close to my heart and I feel that we have really worked hard at, um, moving forward with our multi-tiered systems of supports and embedding PBIS throughout our work. Um, and I was really excited to see that be a part of our contract with our SROs. And I know that through talking with the chiefs, um, who supervise our SROs in our schools, that they were already doing a lot of that training on their own, but they weren't doing specific PBIS training. They were doing specific police officer training on working with students. But I feel like this will give them a better lens into how our schools operate and the expectations that we have with our students and our staff, um, to allow them to better support our students when there is an issue. Um, I know that the SROs that we have right now have been hand-selected to be SROs in our schools and they're invaluable. And, um, so I just wanted to say I really, really appreciate the insight that you've given into that. And specifically Kate, when you addressed that even though we couldn't see all of the data, um, related to our PBIS, you specifically called out how, um, this is very much a racial issue and how we need to work towards, um, improving, even though we've done a lot, we still have so much more work to do and that we're not done yet. So thank you for calling that out, even though we've made great gains, it's, we're not done yet. We have a lot to do. Um, Brian, as always, I am very excited about our family engagement piece and I know we spent a lot of time talking about that before, so I won't really get into that right now. Um, I wanted to say thank you to Rev and Kirsten, uh, for, um, taking us through our multilingual learners slide and talking about the work that we're doing with Ham- Hamlin University and the collaboration that we have with them. I feel like this is really important work, especially knowing that our English learners are, um, disproportionately underserved in our district and this is a, an area that we really need to look at critically and improve on. Um, those students deserve the opportunity to, uh, reach the potential of every other student in our district and I think that you guys are really invested in that and I really appreciate all the work that you're doing, um, towards those goals. Uh, Laurel Anderson, thank you for updating us on our recruitment and retention. I know this is an area that we have talked about for a long time, um, specifically hiring and retaining staff of color. Um, I did have a question though. Kelsey had asked about our teachers of color and I was wondering if when you shared that information with the, the board, um, about the specific numbers, could you also include other staff in that? Because it's not just teachers, which are important, but also our ESPs and any other staff members? Um, I think it would be important for us to, to see that information if that's possible.
Yeah, we, uh, I appreciate that Heather. Uh, we did collect the data by hand. But we don't report, so that's why I focused on the teachers as it relates to our teachers of color for that retention strategy. But if we can create a report in the future, that is absolutely where we want to go with it.
Okay. So I guess for the information that you're planning on sharing with us about the teachers, could you also include ESPs?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Um, uh, when it comes to ECHMAC, I haven't served on ECHMAC for a couple of years, but I did when I first became a board member and, um, I really appreciate the direction that the administration and the staff involved have taken us with ECHMAC, um, and the capacity issues that we have. And I know we spent a lot of time earlier talking about Rice Lake, um, specifically, um, but I really think that even though it was really hard to put some of the work on hold, um, it's been really invaluable to really take a hard look at our capacity issues and how they affect equity within our district. So I just wanted to say thank you for all that work that you've done and I'm excited about moving forward with Rice Lake. I think that's gonna be a game changer for us, um, for the short term. And then I am looking forward to, of course, the long-term, um, outcomes that ECHMAC can bring to the table for us. Um, again, Jill, uh, and Patrick and Rev, uh, when we were talking about culturally responsive instruction, I really appreciated the anecdotal information you shared with us about what teachers are saying. Um, it's one thing to see the numbers, but hearing that teachers and staff who are part of these cohorts really feel that their, their ability to teach and the way that they're teaching has been changed, which is ultimately our goal. Um, I feel like that's really positive, but I do agree with Tanya that I'd like to see a little bit more, um, qualitative data about that. Um, and I know you can't get that to us right now, but I just, I really appreciated hearing the anecdotal pieces, but I would like to see more, more specific data about how things are changing and where does it show up in our work? And I know that's a really big ask because we do so much work. Um, but as a board member, it's part of our responsibility to, to, um, determine where we invest in our future. And I have appreciated the Clear Model and NUA training and, um, how the Clear Model and Solutions have impacted our professional development. And I want to have more data surrounding that so that we can better support funding those types of opportunities for our staff in the future. And, um, I was also, um, excited to hear about our, um, Equity Training 1.0 and 1.5. I know that that's really important and, um, the work has been really, um, transformational for a lot of our staff members who've participated in the professional development. And, um, so I just appreciate that work and that we're continuing to evaluate and improve upon and add additional training, um, for our staff. So I just wanted to say thank you for that. And then, uh, Anthony, for the digital learning for all, I just really, 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 really want to say thank you to you and your team and everybody involved, um, for, when you first came on to the board, or I'm sorry, into the school district, um, a couple of years ago, I had really serious reservations about our technology, um, used in our schools and the plan and how, how we were in, um, really, uh, facilitating technology use in our schools. And I feel like you guys have done an absolutely phenomenal job of shifting the thought process to our instructional pedagogy versus just getting technology in people's hands, but really focusing on how we use technology to better serve all of our students in our district. And I just wanted to say I really admire the work that you've done and I am looking forward to seeing how this progresses and unfolds, especially now that we've had kind of an unprecedented trimester with COVID-19 and distance learning, which was, um, hard for everybody. But I think that because of the work that you guys have done and that you did prior to COVID, we were able to better serve our students than we would have been without the work that you have, have done in the infrastructure that's been put in place for us to serve our families. And so I just wanted to give you a huge thank you for all the work that you've done prior to and during COVID. Um, so thank you.
You're muted, Mike.
Yeah, thank you Director Douglas. And, uh, I, I have a, a few comments. Again, thanks everyone for putting this together. Uh, obviously, uh, on the nine points, uh, there has been a tremendous amount of, of work and, and I do hope that the community understands that, the community sees and, and hears and understands what we have been doing and as we move forward into, uh, the updated strategic planning process, uh, and, and putting some harder numbers around some of these things, uh, that they see that, you know, we, we are committed to, to moving this forward, keeping the, the, the good and the very good stuff and, and working to improve, uh, even more on that. I, I have a couple, uh, comments on some of these and I'll follow up with people, uh, later. Uh, the pre-K programs, uh, you had mentioned that there is now a, a rubric for success, what you should be coming out of pre-K and moving into, uh, K as the Director Muscata-Jones had mentioned. And I'm just wondering, our pre-K programs, uh, how successful are they in getting students to meet some percentage of the, of that rubric? And how successful are we in truly preparing students in those programs for that? Uh, since we do have now a, a measurement, I would like to see how, how well that's working. Uh, the retention, uh, plan and policy, I can't wait, uh, Patrick, for you to send that out to everybody, uh, once you've had a, a chance to look at it, uh, because that has been, uh, an issue around substantiating why we're doing some of our programs and, and, uh, very interested in learning more. Uh, for PBIS, uh, obviously the trend with our special education students has been very positive and very dramatic, uh, but there wasn't a, a general impact on, uh, our general student population. So, you know, I'm wondering, obviously there's probably, uh, some behavioral differences, but how do we also impact, uh, that large cohort, uh, in our general population who, uh, you know, who, who need this work? How can we impact that, uh, and, uh, be more successful there? Uh, but overall, obviously, uh, bringing it down, uh, with our special ed students was, uh, dramatic and, and very thankful for that. Uh, with our multilingual learners, uh, the, uh, ELM program, the English learners in the mainstream, uh, very interested in, uh, in that program. I think you talked about eight sites and maybe a hundred people went through training. Uh, and, and that's where, you know, I'm, I'm following up on some of the things that, uh, Director Simons has said, uh, we're always asking, you know, for the results. And in this case, this seems like a very interesting program. Uh, how, and I don't know if we're in its first year, second or third or where we're at, but, uh, what are the results at those sites? Do we have a higher percentage, uh, of our multi-language learners meeting, uh, the state grade level statistics or, you know, their measurements? Do we have more students coming out earlier, uh, in the program versus going through the full seven-year program? Uh, I know, uh, parents had, uh, some very interesting comments around that at one of our listening sessions. Uh, they were concerned that the students were in the program too long, or at least their, their one student was in the program too long. And, uh, you know, if this is something that can accelerate that, I think it would make, uh, you know, our parents in the district, uh, you know, feel heard. Um, let's see, going down to promising practices, and I think I mentioned this when this first came up, uh, we've identified them. Now, how do we work with our site leaders and HR and our, uh, unions to embed these and to truly, uh, take these throughout the district? If we know there's three or five or 10, uh, behaviors that are promising practices that have significant ability to, to move the needle with our students, how do we ensure that it's very, like, very clearly communicated that these are the things that we want our teachers to be doing? Uh, and how do we ensure that occurs? Uh, so I, I would just like to see, how are we planning on embedding that, uh, with all of our partners, uh, in this? And, uh, I think that's it. So, uh, thank you very much. I appreciate, uh, I appreciate all the work that's gone into this and I appreciate your questions and, uh, or I appreciate the questions from the board members, uh, but also the, the answers from our team. Uh, with that, I don't, uh, have any additional questions. And, uh, let me see.
Charles Staffy?
Yes.
Can I, I, I'd just like to respond to one thing that the, that the work of PBIS, when we looked at the discipline, this is Kate Emmons again. when we looked at the discipline, this is Kate Demins again. So when we looked at the discipline data, yes, it looked like it was a stark improvement on the discipline of students with disabilities, which could be expected because, because of disability, sometimes behaviors are out of the norm. But also, I don't want it to get lost that the work of the positive behavior interventions and supports is so that all students can find an inclusive environment. And it looks like from that data that the majority of students at this work in building the Basswood Bulldogs or the Orioles or We Are Oseo is also benefiting the majority of students. And that is also the work of the PBIS Priority Strategic Work. So, thank you for letting me speak up there.
Okay.
But can I just ask, I guess Kate, you know, where I get a little, when you say, when you, when you're saying that, but you also stated that our Black students are disproportionately represented.
Yes.
So I guess it's really hard for me to trust that, how can we say blanketly all students are benefiting when there is a particular group of students that is not?
Okay, so that.
That's what I want to clarify a little bit.
I agree, Kelsey. That was our, Ms. Dawson Walton, that was a little unfair to say. So when we break it down by general ed and special education students, it is still the work of, or the students who are Black and receiving special education service who are the most disciplined in our system. And the students who are Black and not receiving special ed students are still suspended at a higher rate than their white counterparts. So there is still work to be done.
And that's the problem, right? So that's why I don't, I'm, I, 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 I know we got a lot of people saying thank you and that's great, but I also am like, you know, how are we going to take this and, and, and make a change? Because it hasn't been, you know? And so that's my concern. And I know we're going to get to some things later tonight, but I think we have to be, you know, a lot of people talked about building community trust. We don't have the, we, we, we don't. I mean, right now, there's been a lot of things that have happened lately that has put us in a position that trust needs to be built. Relationships need to be restored. And so I think we just got to really have to be careful what we're, when we're talking. We aren't making blanket statements that like, oh, this is great, except for, you know, these one group of students who just, you know, are disproportionately represented in special ed, disproportionately represented in discipline. And so I think we know that. I mean, it's not anything that we don't know. And there is data upon data. I mean, there's just, it's just so much, you know, it's kind of overwhelming. So I just would, I just, I know, Corey, I know you want to get to the next point, but I think it all really ties together of where our district is going. And I don't think by, by telling people like all the great things that we're doing, I think people need to feel it and, and see it and have an experience of that. So that's all I'll say about that.
Thank you Director Dawson Walton, thank you Kate. Corey, at this point, I think we need to take a break, five minutes so everybody can take a break. And then we'll come back. So it's 8:36, let's call it 8:41. Thank you very much.
Is anybody on to, should we let the directors and coordinators and those people go? I suppose everybody's on break.
Yes, Patrick, that's fine. Thanks.
Okay.
But on the 12th of May, you did direct me and, and the administration to really dig into what we're now referring to as strategic initiatives. So we're all learning how to change our vocabulary just a bit. But look at, look at initiatives and priorities into a three-year rolling operational plan. So tonight, we're going to look at draft operational plan and 90-day, one-year and three-year board calendar so that we can map out the work right in front of us moving through the summer into next school year, knowing that both operational plan and board calendar are going to be fluid, documents that will be updated regularly and often. So they will come back to you frequently. And as a comment from the earlier conversation, know that with those will be coming vision cards or scorecards, as I said earlier, with, to Director Simon's point, will define success criteria and levels of success criteria. So we know how much success we're experiencing in the system and those will be built into those different vision cards that come along with monitoring reports. So we're moving into a model that will give more frequent updates throughout the year and not all at once at the very end. We will have the annual piece in October, but we'll be giving you more periodic updates around those data pieces moving forward. So last week, we, at our work session, the board had a unique opportunity to provide some open board comments in, in response to how much has been, you know, occurring in our lives recently and the impact of the homicide of George Floyd, that its impact on all of us, members of our communities, our students, our families, our, our staff. And at that work session, some board members brought forth some specific proposed action items. And some of those are really administrative in nature and management initiatives as we use that governance management approach. And some are more school board considerations as governance items. And because last week's meeting was really intended to be kind of that space for each of the board members to share your own reflections and perspectives, we didn't really have that space to have a discussion about any actions or proposals that the board has, you know, individual board members as a whole may want to see. And so I want to walk us through what we've been working on and gives you a sense for that. I hope, you know, I know board members have been looking at our documents over the weekend and the board packet in preparation. And it's a lot and then we're going to need to allow for some more time to give you time to kind of digest that and really process through what you want to see from us. So tonight's just kind of a starting point for that. But really, we're looking for the direction you want as a board for us to take moving forward with our, our initiatives and how we map those out over time. I think we all share the commitment to take action. We've heard that theme loud and clear and really, really loud and clear in the last couple of meetings. And I think we can do this by accelerating some of our work and how we take action to lead some of that healing and change that needs to occur as we stand together to really work even harder at combating racism and discrimination in our system and really creating those welcome spaces for every one of our students and staff members. So we're moving closer to finalizing and implementing this operational plan over the next few weeks. And I wanted you to see the draft version tonight with the idea that with some additional board input over the next few weeks, we can bring another more refined version to you at the August 11th work session. But we need your, this is a point of contact for you with some input. And along the way here, there's a few recommendations that I have that are not quite in here yet, that I'm going to just kind of walk through right now and tuck those in the back of your mind as you look at these documents, because we, you're going to be adding, you know, and refining these things. But some, some things that I've heard over the last few weeks and months that have really come forward more recently, things I really think we should take action on, that I need to, with your support, put in the plan, the operational plan. For example, creating a superintendent student, an advisory or leadership committee. I, I got to work on the name there. I think leadership, because I want to have student voice and a leadership role in our district, but really working directly with me to give feedback and input and amplify our student voice in our district. And we've talked about that for a while and I want that to be in our plan. I also want to continue, you, you saw last week our family and community engagement plan and you see the phases that are coming forward to you over the summer and into the fall and, and that work's already been started. So that's, that was another one I wanted to point out. The Midwest and Plains Equity Assistance Center is helping us with our equity context analysis process this year. And that'll be taking time to evaluate our current tools, training and practices that were covered tonight and really look at impact on instruction and learning. And how, where is that working and where is it needing to be improved? So, and that process will result in an equity-defined plan with actionable steps and measures that many of those actions likely will be annual. So there, those will come out of that evaluation process. And then also, you know, there's been a conversation around school resource officers and I really am recommending we put together an advisory committee that would include students, parents and our principals, especially at the middle and high school level, some district staff and representatives from our Maple Grove and Brooklyn Park Police Department to really work on getting authentic feedback and input in an advisory role to help us continue to improve. And you've heard some of the strategies and requirements in our contract that were talked about earlier tonight. So that's another recommendation I have that's not currently in, in this operational plan. And then two others that we've talked about over the last few weeks and I think it surfaced here lately. Tim is putting together a, a new policy review process in our board calendar. And we will continue to, how do we address our racial disparities through that review of our policies? And in the process that Tim's kind of laying out for the course of the year as we do that more systematically. Also, that same desire to address racial disparities as we look at our contracting process. And this is a conversation we've had for a while too, and I think we should be, and I know Ron's been open to this as well and really working hard to what, what are some additional ways we can look at improving our efforts when it comes to our contract processes for construction and transportation and the other kinds of things that come to you as a board through our procurement processes? So that, those are some things that I think need to be immediately put in from, from my lens, from a recommendation standpoint. You have others, I know. And what I'd like to do now is kind of walk through some of the highlights of the operational plan and then the highlights of the board calendar and then open it back up for all of you to give some feedback for us. And I have really four overarching questions for tonight and for the next few weeks. And I'm, right now, I'm open to your feedback, but my thinking is if we could take between now and our next official board meeting, which is July 21st, that gives, gives about a month for the board members to really evaluate and dig into these plans and give us feedback and give us enough time to bring that revision back to you at the work session in August, since we don't have a work session in July. And four questions. So when you look at this operational plan for the board calendar, be asking yourself, what's missing? Are there any items that need to be removed or added to either the operational plan or the board calendar? Also, give us feedback on are they placed correctly? So when you think of looking at the, the way we, we've stretched things out by year or by month, when you think of capacity in our system, timing and urgency, are we placing them in the right place? And then lastly, like as happened again tonight, just please ask for clarification on language in here. I want to ensure that as a board, you have a shared understanding of what we mean by, whether it's a description of something or a specific initiative or anything in there, because we are getting used to some new vocabulary. And I really think it's important, we're on the same page with how we describe things. So again, what's missing, what should be removed or added? Are things in the right place? And what clarification is needed? And I'll, I'll follow up with those things too in my weekly updates of the day we start packing. So I'm going to try to present now the operational plan. And bear with me here. This is the three-year operational plan working draft. And I, I know the print is small and I know you have it in your materials too, so.
Right.
Yeah.
We only see your drive.
See my drive, well. How about that? Is that better?
Nope.
That's a three-year operational plan.
Now we just see ourselves.
Try this again here.
Select screen two.
Anthony's laughing at me. He knows I'll get it right eventually. How about now, three-year operational plan?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so if you go, if you scroll to page three, this is still the draft. If you see up in the upper left corner, this is our draft preliminary strategic directions and our areas of improvement. And there are six of them here, and they are with a coding system of A, B, C, D, E, and F. So really, tonight, we're, we have an extra focus on our academic excellence for all students and closing and eradicating racial and other educational gaps. That's, those are the two that we're really kind of centered in on tonight. As you look at page four, we took some time to really evaluate beyond just the nine strategic priorities this year, what other implementation work we're doing. And that is on the right-hand side, and you can see the list is long. There's many more things than the nine we covered tonight, but we really want to try to get a comprehensive feel for the initiatives that touch the whole system. On the left, our learning work, which is really areas we're studying, we're evaluating, we're trying to learn more about, but haven't quite moved to implementation yet. We did highlight some of these that we were in the thick of. So, for example, the distance learning plan, we were, we were learning and implementing at the same time. We were learning how to best implement our summer learning structure with the blended learning model or hybrid, hybrid learning model that MBE gave us. You've, you've been presented with our family and community engagement plan and our building a better future facilities plan, which is kind of in that learning work phase this year, moving towards implementation for next year. Same with online enrollment, grading practices this spring, and a number of other things here that are in that study phase or learning phase that could potentially move to implementation level work. And this, page five continues that list. So I'm just highlighting a few things on, on that list for you as examples. So we did that step, then we moved towards really trying to map those out moving forward. So again, this is very much draft. I'm on page seven. Looking forward to next year, looking at what are those learning areas? So what do we need to be studying, learning more about, testing, and developing possible initiatives around? You can see again that family engagement plan, that might be moving into an implementation phase. But at the time we built this, we were, you know, we were still waiting board direction. A couple others here that we're looking at, for example, in our program and preliminary curriculum, we'll be studying social emotional learning, English language arts, social studies, current tech ed. We'll also be looking at our distance learning and online learning options, because we're right in the middle of that as well, as well as our, you know, tiered systems of support across our system. Moving into the next years, from an implementation standpoint, we will be implementing that equity context analysis process, our DL4A Phase Three Elementary Year One. Our PBAS work that was talked about tonight, we have, this is a long list of implementation items. I'm just highlighting a few. You will hear more about secondary math curriculum next week at our board meeting. And next year would be building a better future, our plan year one. Some additional things in here would be some mental health advisory committee, our district discipline committee, and a number of other items here that I won't go through every one. I just wanted to highlight some. We're also working hard as a district to move some things that maybe have been in our implementation category to now have become more of our standard work. Usually after two or three years of implementation, it's become what you typically can just regularly do. It's a part of who we are and what we do. And we're, we've been working on identifying in our system what those standard work items are. And to Director Simon's comment earlier, the next step is then, at some point, are there things that need to leave the system if they're not effective? Now, sometimes that standard work list includes a needed improvement effort. So it doesn't mean they're working perfectly necessarily, but it can be part of what we've been doing and still need improvement efforts. PBAS could be a good example of that. If you, if I just go down to page eight, you can see we've tried to reach out to years twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-two, twenty-three to make some estimations on when we're ready to take on this work. So in two years, studying potentially, and these are again fluid, so please understand this is just draft. But do we want in two years to be studying start times in schools? Do we want to be studying our immersion programs? I believe we should be looking at a special education audit. There's, we would be studying health, music, talented and gifted programming, and our middle school DL4A plan. Those items next year that are in learning would move to implementation the following year. So that's the flow you would see. Same with, it's getting a little harder now when you look at two years, but looking at our curricular program improvement processes. And for example, in twenty-one, twenty-two, we'd be in building our better future year two. And then in the following year, in year three of that effort, you can see how things would go from learning to implementation and eventually move towards standard work. Well, this is our first, again, in draft form, and we're looking for your feedback. If you think of it through those four questions that I posed to you earlier, for the next coming weeks, what's missing, what needs to be removed or added? Are they placed correctly in the timing, knowing, thinking of our capacity of our system? And then what additional clarifications needed? The remainder of this document is just some, you can see the feedback of some of our learning leaders work, because we went through this with our fifty-plus learning leaders. And then also, near the end here, really looking at our standard work, what's going well, what needs improvement, even if it's in standard work. So you can see a list here of things that we've been trying to identify in that standard work area. And then you can see at the end here, some additional comments near the end. So that's how we're beginning to map out our priority work, and this is a touch point we wanted for you to give feedback. Maybe what I'll do is to see if there's any questions now before I switch to the board calendar. Unless you're just ready for me to move. That way, I can't see what I'm presenting, so I'm sorry.
This is Director Simon's. I have a question.
Yes.
So as I'm looking at the list of many things, it seems to me like they should be organized according to our strategic directions, because that would help us to see that if this strategic direction is important to us, do we have five things in there, three things in there? Kind of how do these line up against that? That would also be a useful framework to be able to say, what might we need to stop doing in order to prioritize something else? So is, was that part of the plan to organize them in that way?
That is the next step. Yep. So we're, we're just not quite there yet. And again, just showing you the draft of what we have so far, but that you're exactly right. We would begin to align those to those strategic direction areas. So you're, you're spot on.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe what I can do is just jump to the next document here and show you how this looks for the board agenda. Bear with me. So can someone confirm, you can see this document says draft ninety-day, one-year, three-year?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So again, at the front end, what you see is another, again, we lead with the strategic directions as Director Simon's just pointed out, those six areas right now in draft form. And then this page is mapping out the work for, actually, we grabbed last month as well, May, June, July, and August. So you notice on the top of this document, we're all gonna get used to a new kind of way of referencing these items. At the cross the top, it'll identify these items either as work session items, regular meeting, maybe it's a policy committee meeting. It also identify whether actions requested or if it's informational, or if it's typically on a consent agenda. We're adding in now the language around monitoring reports. You know, we have listening session identified, whether it's a superintendent report, a professional development for the board, or a special meeting requirement. So those, the format should show the item, and then it'll kind of tell you what kind of meeting it's intended to come to and what type of item it is, whether it's action or information or consent. So we've tried to map out the remainder of the summer here on this page, on page, I don't have a page number down there, but what I'm presenting here. And you can see in June, it includes the items that were a part of last week's meeting with the date of six-nine, this, tonight's meeting with the date of six-sixteen. And then the items in draft, at least so far, as we're still building the agenda for next week's regular meeting, the things that'll be coming forward to you. And then looking out to the July twenty-first board meeting as well as the August work session and board meeting that's coming. And this is aligned by the five board roles, whether it's policy, operational oversight, board governance, self-governance, superintendent relations, public engagement, those five areas. And this is our calendar that, the model, the framework, the template, I guess, the for us to use moving forward as we look at the summer planning. And just a couple of key things I want to point out to you that are really critical for us this summer as we're doing our work. You've heard me talk a lot about our opening a school process that's underway. And you will be getting, you know, information on that in my weekly updates as well, but that will be coming to you as far as an update on our work in July, the board meeting there. The building a better future recommendations again next week, along with some other items in June. But the, the other piece I wanted to point out is, as even we get into August, getting, starting to get some monitoring reports, July and August, you would get a monitoring report on the opening of school, and then into August, you'll get a monitoring report on our equity context analysis process as we start meeting with Midwestern Plains. And that in August is where we want to try to finalize the strategic roadmap, including our strategic directives, the operational plan, and the board calendar. You'll get it, again, just looking at August, another monitoring update on our family and community engagement plan. If you look on the bottom of the page here, to the bottom right. So we're trying to map out when information comes to you, when you would be acting on that, how it's coming to you, so you can anticipate. And if I scroll down to this next page here, this takes the end of the summer and maps out through December. Again, there'll be additional things coming as we build this, but we are trying to look out not only through December, but if I scroll down to the next page, you'll see January through June. So truly trying to give us a one-year look at your, at the board calendar and things we know that are time-sensitive that come to the board at certain times of the year, along with some of the things you've asked to, to have come to you. You'll see numerous monitoring reports as we also start building the vision cards that come with the priorities that we're identifying. Lastly, on this document, just to highlight, what we'll eventually be doing is working this annual calendar into more of a three-year approach too, but right now, you're just getting this ninety-day and one-year calendar, because we really need to lock in the things that are coming to you in the next three months and into the fall as we're working on the start of school. So that's kind of a review of, hopefully you see the connection from identifying our priority work, and we'll be moving those into those strategic directions. And then the action that comes with those, and when they're coming to you as a board member, or as a board for board meetings, whether work sessions or regular meetings as we map out the coming year. So I think we're gonna pause there and come back to the original question I started with, is I know there's some proposed actions, recommendations. I've, I've shared with you some of mine here that I think should be included right away. And I guess I'm looking for feedback for, for myself and our administration as we build this out even further, what your desires are for us. So Chair Ostafi, maybe I'll turn it back to you to help organize the comments and feedback back to, to us.
Okay, thank you, Superintendent McIntyre. You know, when we look at, as you said, you want to give us basically until the July board meeting for some significant feedback on, you know, the, the items, the number in the hundreds. So I appreciate that timing. You know, we do want to move as aggressively as we can to get that completed, as you said, by August or September. So there's a lot in there, and I'm, I'm going to take my time to continue to, to go through each and every one of those. As you said, what is missing? There's some things that many people want to see. There's, what do we need to remove or add? What's placed correctly? And, and ask for clarification of language. So I, I hope that we, you know, do take the time, each board member, dig into that and come back prepared with a lot of good questions on that. Tonight, I'm sure there's questions and some immediate needs and desires. And if we want to start, let's